Welcome, everybody, to the May 1st, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the room for your convenience. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Joe V. Do the moment of silence and pledge your allegiance for us.
Please stand for a moment of silence. Please say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and just for all.
Thank you, Joe, and that has been the strongest pledge of allegiance I've heard in a long time.
(laughing) That's a good thing.
Okay, at this time, we're going to review and approve the agenda.
So moved.
A move to approve.
Second.
Second. To approve the agenda, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, we come to the proclamation. Executive proclamation for the Pennington County Correction Week, May 6th through the 12th of 2018. And I'll recognize Kevin Tone.
Good morning, Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff, and thank you for taking a few minutes to recognize our correctional staff, both from the jail and the Juvenile Services Center. And I've said this many times before, but I'll say it again, they are frontline in our community, and they work 24/7, 365, and deal with a very difficult clientele at times, but still do it with compassion and caring, so kudos to them for doing it. We have Commander of the Jail, Rob Yantis, and Commander of JSC, Joe Gutierrez, and they're going to have their staff introduce themselves, tell you how long they've been doing what they're doing, and then we have a proclamation that will be read at the end. And again, thank you for taking the time to recognize them for what they do for our community, so I'll call on Commander Yantis at this time.
Thanks, Kevin. Mr. Gant.
My name is Rob Yantis, I'm the commander of the jail, I've been there for 10 years, and I'd just like to introduce some fine staff to you.
Good morning, I'm Sergeant John Wager, so I've been at the jail for just a little over 12 years.
Morning, Jeff Bull, I've been at the jail 16 years.
I'm Casey Monche, I've been at the jail for 12 years.
Lieutenant Kathy Houston, been at the jail for 16 years.
Dave Rubens, I've been at the jail for 17 years.
Officer Jaeger, I've been at the jail for a little over four years.
Sergeant David Ricky, been 17 years.
Good morning, Joe Gutierrez, Commander of the Juvenile Services Center, I've been there seven years. I'd like to introduce our JSC staff.
Sergeant Tim Lundlum, 22 years.
Correction Officer Anisha Morton, I've been at JSC since February of 2015.
Sergeant Jalanda Ricky, I've been there 19 years.
Lieutenant Wood, been there 21 years.
Darren Patterson, been at JSC for 17 years.
John Martin, I've been at JSC for eight years.
Heather Heinert, I've been at JSC for over 18 years.
I'd like to also introduce Heather Heinert to read the proclamation for Correction Week.
Whereas May 6th through May 12th, 2018, will be celebrated across the United States as National Corrections Week, and whereas the corrections profession is one of the most challenging professions one can pursue, it is also one of the most noble. Correction staff keep our citizens and our communities safe, not simply by securing jails and juvenile detention facilities and the offenders confined therein. Correctional employees serve admirably through the Pennington County Jail and the Juvenile Services Center as custody officers, counselors, teachers, and chaplains, and healthcare professionals, support staff supervisors, and commanders. They are among the most capable, committed, patient, and persistent public servants in our nation, and whereas few truly understand the difficulties and challenges these corrections professionals face daily, often at personal risk, they are given those who have engaged in dangerous and addictive behaviors, as well as the responsibility to reform and rehabilitate. They are given societies illiterate and unskilled and the task to educate. They are given those who lack medical care or in poor health and must help make them well. They are given the mentally ill and the responsibility to diagnose, treat, and protect. Correction staff are in a position to offer offenders a better example and a new path. These staff do so with limited resources and often with little awareness or acknowledgement from those outside the field of corrections. Yet correctional employees continue to rise to the challenge time and again, and whereas it is appropriate, we honor the correction staff in our Pennington County correctional facilities for their invaluable contribution to our society. Now therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners, County of Pennington, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6th through May 12th as Pennington County Corrections Week, and encourage the citizens of Pennington County to share in acknowledging the outstanding job the Pennington County correction staff perform on a daily basis in serving the entire community.
Thank you, Heather. I want to give you...
Very good.[382.97][382.97](applause)
If you guys don't mind, I'd like you commissioners to shake your hands as you go, appreciate you. Now, that's the way to start out a meeting.[448.56][448.56](laughing) Ta-ya. Next on our agenda is the executive proclamation for Public Service Recognition Week, May 6th through the 12th, 2018. I would look for John.
Morning, Commissioners, John Moro, County HR Department. We have an executive proclamation as well for our long-term county employees. We actually have 59 employees with the county at this point that have 20 years or more with the county, so again, a lot of long-term folks that have dedicated their lives and their careers to helping the citizens of the county. Today, we're fortunate enough to have a group of people that have been with the county for 30 years or more, and one that's actually 40 years or more, and I'd like to introduce them as well, if we could. So, folks, if you would, I'd invite you to stand up and then come over to the side. But we have Julie Pearson, Attorney, 41 years. We have Randy Walker with the Highway Department Supervisor, 35 years. We have Doug Slutten with the Highway Department, he's been with the Highway Department for 33 years. KJ Peterson with the Auditor's Department, 32 years. Chris Grable with the Highway Department for 32 years. Mike Peterson with the Building and Grounds Department, 32 years. Janet Saylor with the Treasurers Department, 31 years, and then Loein Tholwesson with the Department of Equalization for 30 years. So again, a lot of long-term folks that have dedicated their careers to the county. So again, much appreciation for what you've done, congratulations, and thank you for that.
You're going to want, you want to read it?
I would, yes, if that's okay.
Yeah, I won't read it no more.
So if you guys, just stay for a little bit, please. So, the executive proclamation from Pennington County for Public Service Recognition Week, again, dates of May 6th through May 12th. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung champions do the work that keeps our nation working. Whereas the men and women who work for a government tackle some of the most important challenges and opportunities facing our country, whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths, and whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Whereas the Pennington County Board of Commissioners is extremely proud of the dedication shown by its employees, day in and day out, the service that they provide, the diverse services demanded by the American people and the government with the efficiency and integrity, and now therefore, we, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners of Pennington County, South Dakota, do hereby proclaim May 6th through May 12th of 2018 as Pennington County Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Join us this week and throughout the year in showing them their respect and appreciation they seldom receive yet richly deserve.
Thank you, John. Appreciate you guys.[642.62][642.62](applause) You know, we really thank you guys for all of your time served and so forth. As we were talking earlier, we had one person who said he was just going to work for a couple of years, and now it's been over 30.[705.54][705.54](laughing) That just goes to show you guys' dedication, and I know as a Commissioner, I really appreciate that, the hard work that you guys do. I don't know if any other Commissioners would have a comment they'd like to say.
Going to have to agree, we've got some amazing people here at Pennington County, and it just shows through the hard work and the dedication that the people here that have been here 20, 30 years have given us, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
I would reflect the same sentiments.
Thanks, guys.
And I'll, I'll clear that.
Next, we come to the consent agenda, Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 17th, 2018; approval of the minutes of the special meeting, April 20th, 2018; to set and approve the civil township bonds for treasurers and clerks as presented by the auditor; number 10 is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Rogers Volunteer Fire Department; number 11 is to appoint Mr. Fred Eisenbrand to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission for a term of five years; and number 12 is to approve a public display of fireworks for the Black Hill Speedway on Friday, June 29th, 2018, with a rain-out date of Friday, July 6th, provided they meet the requirements as submitted by the fire administrator.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the audience that would like any of these consent items pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, any Board of Commissioners like anything pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve by DeSanto, seconded by Hagcock, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to items from the auditor.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Moller, Chief Deputy Auditor. We would like to continue this item to the next meeting, we've discovered that there's an error in the legal description.
Motion to continue till March 15th, I think is the new, or May, sorry, 15th. Second.
Motion was made to continue to the May 15th meeting, seconded by DeSanto, any discussion from public? Board seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Cindy. Items from the sheriff. We're moving along pretty good now, Sheriff.[893.37][893.37](laughing)
My part's easy, the hard part's for you guys. Again, Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff, and put this back on the agenda as follow-up from a previous meeting, it's a request for school resource deputies at Box Elder School District, or the Douglas School District in Box Elder, and we do have two representatives from the school district here, they can come on up and have them introduce themselves in just a minute here. And there was a request of the commission that we followed with the City of Box Elder, and Commissioner DeSanto helped organize that meeting and attended, I'll let him speak to that, but we, it's our intent to modify the request today to just ask for one school resource officer, so all the numbers I provided previously, you just cut in half, so it'd be a $44,000 impact to the 2019 budget with the rest of the cost being absorbed this year. But again, I'd like to have the Douglas School District folks introduce themselves, and you heard a lot of their testimony last time, we're not going to go into all that, but they just wanted to reinforce their support for the proposal.
Okay.
I'm Alec Kerr, Superintendent Schools at Douglas, and just I want to reinforce that we think it's very important that we have more school resource officers, and we appreciate the consideration by the County Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
I'm Bill Aldridge, President of the School Board, and I'll dito what Mr. Kerr said, and we really appreciate the fact, one, that the Pennington County Sheriff's Office, the job that they do, and the support that you give us for all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I think...
At this time, I may, Mr. Chair, just going to defer to Commissioner DeSanto to, I guess, talk about the meeting and his thoughts on where we need to go from here, so...
Yeah, that's what I was just about to do.[1004.26][1004.26](laughing) Mr. DeSanto.
We met with the principal, the superintendent of Douglas Schools, the mayor, police chief from, from Box Elder, the mayor from Box Elder, and several representatives from the Sheriff's Department. Came to the conclusion that, that Box Elder was on board, the Police Department was on board, to provide one of those liaison officers for us. So therefore, we have reduced the number that we will have to provide by one, and I believe that, after hearing from many of my constituents and people that have children going to school there, I believe that that's a wise decision to provide these, these officers, and I'm happy that Box Elder has decided to throw in their help as well.
Thank you, Mr. DeSanto. Any Commissioner have a comment? Ms. Hagcock?
I have to agree with Mr. DeSanto, I think that he did the work on it, and we're paying for one now, I agreed with two, but if we're getting help from Box Elder, I think it was important to Douglas, it was important to my constituents as well, walking around and talking about it. Safety of our children is very important, so people are telling me, what do you need to cut to get these kids what they need? So I'm glad this came to a nice solution, and I appreciate the Sheriff and all the work he's done, and Mr. DeSanto, thank you.
Mr. Farabee?
I move that we continue this item until budget cycle, the school year is almost over, so let's talk about all the schools in Pennington County during the budget cycle. That's my motion, thank you.
Any seconds. Motion dies for lack of a second. My discussion is, is I want to appreciate the people all coming together and finding a solution, this was a pretty tough decision that, that was made at the last commission meeting, and you know, I just, we need to recognize Mr. DeSanto and Kevin for bringing, stowing down, getting the meeting together and working together as a community to get this, to find the compromise, and I think in the end result, I think it's a good result. So, Kevin, did you have a follow-up?
Just in clarification and talking to the auditor, I want to make sure the motion includes the additional FTE and acknowledgement of the funding for the 2019 budget, because we're doing budget preparations now, so Julie, or the auditor just wanted that clarified, and I think I gave that to you in the previous memo in terms of a motion, but just wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
Let me make a suggestion for the motion, to add one FTE to the Sheriff's Office to support the additional school liaison deputy at the Douglas School District, and then acknowledge the Sheriff will be adding approximately $41,005, 44?
Forty.
Forty.
Be about $44,000 to the 2019 budget.
$44,000 to the Law Enforcement Division budget in 2019 for the additional liaison office, I'd look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by DeSanto, seconded by Hagcock, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I would also like to thank Kevin, Kevin did most of the work here, he's giving me too much credit, and I appreciate the help that you gave us to get this done, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Farabee?
I have a question for both the Sheriff and the Deputy State's Attorney, either in or both, where in the law does it say that the county has any obligation, any responsibility, for that matter even the right, to interfere or to be involved in funding any thing at schools?
Mr... I'll defer to, I guess, the State's Attorney for a legal opinion, but from a public safety perspective, I think we have a moral and ethical and legal obligation to provide public safety for, not just our schools, but our entire community, so I think it fits well within the purview of what we do in terms of public safety.
Jay Allerman, Deputy State's Attorney, I would agree wholeheartedly with what Sheriff Tone just told you as part of his obligation. Obviously, he has to come to you with regard to the budget piece of that obligation, which he did, and you can say no, or you can say yes. So I believe you're well within your legal authority to do that.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair. Follow-up. South Dakota Supreme Court has said over and over and over that counties, cities are creatures of statute. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. What statute?
In Chapter 7, 8, I think even Section 20, I just said it, George.
You didn't let me finish.
And in that statute, you are to fund the various offices and provide a budget to support the functions of those offices and departments, which you do. One of those offices just came before you to ask for permission to fund this particular item, it's well within your purview to do so.
Mr. Chair, you interrupted me, what specific statute, and don't give me Title VII. What specific statute, and this, for both the Deputy State's Attorney and the Sheriff, find the specific statute that authorizes us, allows, I should say, allows us to spend taxpayer dollars outside of the specific functions laid out in Title VII?
Thank you, Mr. Farabee, I think the answer's been questioned, or questions been answered, Mr. DeSanto.
I, I would like to hear the answer, I mean, if there's not, if we're not, if we're out of our, out of line, then we need to know that.
I think Jay just described it.
Well, he's asking for a statute, I'd like to...
Actually, it's a state of the statute, 7, 8, 20, that is a statute and code. That's a general statute that gives authority to the commission and what they do, there's several subsections of that particular statute. I could research the matter even further, but as Commissioner Farabee knows, under Dillon's rule, you can do what is specifically provided or reasonably done therefrom. So it is reasonable under those statutes because you're already specifically authorized to fund the offices and departments, and what they do and what their function is. That's what you're doing here today, and at a bare minimum, it's reasonable that a request is the Sheriff has made in concert with City of Box Elder, their law enforcement, the school district, well within your purview, that's my legal opinion.
Yes, and I, thank you, Jay.
Follow-up.
No, no, Mr. DeSanto has the floor.
It's, I, I'm good with that answer.
Okay. One more for...
What the Deputy State's Attorney failed to tell us...
Call the question, please, call the question.
Eighteen...
Point of order, he has the floor, he has the right to, he gave him the floor.
Yeah, in order to call the question, you need a second.
Seven days.
It has to be recognized.
Thank you.
Seven days, 8-20 is the lead-in to 18 subsections. Those are specific subsections, and one of them that I keep referring to is, if I get the number, I think it's nine or 10, but the county is to superintendent the fiscal, the County Commission is to superintendent the fiscal concerns of the county. I don't know any of those other 17 statutes that say we have an obligation, even a right for that matter, to spend money the way we're doing it, thank you.
Okay, I think at this point...
Can I call the question now?
Recognizing Ms. Hagcock.
Call the question.
Second?
Second.
Seconded to call the question, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One no from Mr. Farabee calling the question, now we go straight to vote, all in favor of the mo...
Public didn't get a chance to speak on this item.
Would anybody from...
Public didn't get a chance to speak.
Looks like we have one person. Mr. Crevel.
Good morning, sounds like the decision's been made already, but I'll just offer my comments for the record, and don't, don't construe anything I say to be critical of Douglas School District, or the Sheriff's Office, or anyone that votes yes, but I, you know, this was a fiscal question, and I didn't hear any fiscal analysis offered, other than it's, it's a good thing to do, and everyone thinks that security for children is a good thing. But I will, I will, I'll just offer a quick, and this is, I'm not a fiscal analyst by, by trade or occupation, but you know, there's a lot of information available online from the Department of Education website about the fiscal health and the, and the funding of school districts, and the fact of the matter is, Douglas School District is one of the richest school districts, well, the richest in Pennington County, and that's due to a thing called Impact Aid. Every school district since 1996, actually, has, has been double-funded that gets Impact Aid, and they get about, I think last year, I think the statistical digest from the Department of Education said that they received $5.5 million. They have about 2,800 students, and that is almost $2,000 per student above the $5,400 and so that is provided by, through state and property taxes. That's 36% more funding than the average school district. Some of the, some of the things that are, are, some of the symptoms of, of that kind of funding is, you know, a couple of years ago, and for probably multiple years before that, Douglas School District had the highest average teacher salary in the state of South Dakota. They have a lot of money. And I guess that, that should come into some play here, when, when someone asks for money, you know, do they need it? Almost, to me, and I don't mean this as derogatory as it sounds, but it's almost like, you know, when you give a panhandler money and they go across the parking lot and get in the car nicer than yours. I'm not sure that there was any fiscal questions asked about, should we be doing this, and why are we doing this, do we have too much money? The amenities and the disparity between Douglas and Rapid City are a lot.
Thank you.
It's because of that, thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been called, and so we're to the vote, is there anybody else in the public who'd like to talk?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto, well, no, we, question was called, so we, our discussion, and everybody's clear in the motion? The motion was to add one FTE to the Sheriff's Office to support the additional school liaison deputy at the Douglas School District, and part of that motion also is to acknowledge the Sheriff will be adding approximately $44,000 to the Law Enforcement Division budget in 2019 for the additional liaison officers, the motion's on the floor. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Mr. Farabee. Thank you, folks. Next, we come to County Health Facility Proposals. Recognize Mike Cool.
Good morning, Mike Cool, Pennington County Buildings and Grounds Construction Project Manager. Last week, last Tuesday, the Buildings and Grounds received proposals for the County Health Facility Furniture Package, we received two proposals. One from Dakota Business Center and one from T., Tim Healy and Associates. Through review, we have determined that Dakota Business Center was the lowest responsible proposer that meets the qualification requirements for the proposals. The amount of their proposal is under the 366 estimated furniture budget that we outlined to the commission in... furniture budget that we outlined to the commission in December of two thousand sixteen. The bid, or the proposal amount was three-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars and one-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. Buildings and Grounds is recommending that we award the, a contract to Dakota Business Center as the lowest responsible bidder on, relative to this procurement package. Funding will come out of the county expansion fund, which is looked at in terms of the bonding funds available and accumulated building.
Thank you, Mike. Was there any comments from the public? Any comments from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Farabee.
Just so everybody understands, the county expansion fund is a bunch of borrowed money, the two and a like forty-five, fifty million. So it's not like there's some money sitting there. It's all borrowed money. Thank you.
I'll make a comment. Mike, as being part of the building committee when we were reviewing this, I, I've got one other question. I know the, the committee worked hard, and, and a lot of this stuff is specialty materials. I mean, you look at this and I get sticker shock, but probably about like a lot of other people do, but in reality, in all reality, I think when you built the building, we didn't build it to fit certain type of furniture. You built it for the flow and how it's going to work and so forth. And then we went out and adjusted to what we needed for the furniture for that place. I do know from working with Buildings and Grounds, some others, that a lot of this stuff that's for this has to be specialty items for bedding, chairs. You guys did your due diligence of looking at the lifespan of, of the furniture that's going to be used. It's not something, being part of buying some cheaper furniture that I've seen before, and I've seen it down at Detox years ago, it wears out faster, you end up replacing it and so forth. But I think one of the things I wanted to highlight on this, part of this is assembly too, in this bid price, isn't it?
Excuse me?
Part of, of this bid price is the assembly of the furniture, bringing-
That's correct.
Delivery, set up.
It is delivery, installation, setup.
Yeah. And, and for a lot of people, that's, that's key, that's a lot of labor that's involved in, into that bid, too.
There, and we do have, we have requirements within the package in regards, a project manager is required as part of this process because it is a significant project, as, as you can tell by the size of the contract.
Yeah.
And it takes a lot of coordination in order to, to move this stuff, get it here on time, move it, go through the shop drawing process for verification that, that everything is being met, then having it shipped on time, and then assembled and coordinated throughout the facility.
One other comment I wanted to make, Mike, before we start. Even part of the building design was designed, we did the pot, the pot, or the pot, less offices and more of that, like the planning department type thing, petitions for the people, right?
Correct. We are, one of the things that we are doing with this building and what we've been doing with our recent, more recent projects is that we are often putting people in cubicles rather than the offices or something if their job descriptions meet those requirements. And so we do have a couple of open, large open office areas that we are, will, are for cubicles for people to work in.
Thanks, Mike. Is there any more questions from the board? Mark, do you have ones?
I, I would like to point out that we are, you know, we did go through, as part of this process, we went through an appraisal process of the existing furniture to determine what was of quality, worthy of the process of moving it. And so there is furniture that is being moved. This isn't complete, completely new furniture for the building. There is existing furniture that is being relocated for this facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Farabee.
He answered my question in part. About ten, ten percent of HHS stuff and Detox stuff will be reused, or five percent, or?
Uh, there probably, probably a higher percentage of the drug and alcohol furniture will be reused. There's probably not a lot in Health and Human Services that's being reutilized. We went through an extensive process on, on, on this, for this project, for this building, in terms of the big, building committee setting up a way of, of analyzing and evaluating furniture. And some of, some of those have to do with quality of materials, but also in regard to the styles of furniture that are available. Things like teachers' desks, which often are being, things that are being utilized by people, don't function very well in, in the type of office environment that we have these days. Generally, people work out of corner stations for computer systems because everything we do these days is, utilizes computers. A teacher desk does not work very well for a computer.
Thank you, Mike. One more follow-up?
So virtually everything that Barry has, it'll be salvaged or trashed, or?
Uh, it, it will be, the, the stuff that is not worthy of, of, of a move or something will be, will be disposed of. Generally, those are things that are, that kind of paper skin particle board desk that do not move well.
Yeah.
Other things will be put on surplus, on a surplus auction. Things like, things like teachers' desks and stuff will go onto the surplus auction.
Obviously, money is no objection, but, or object, but I'll be voting no, obviously. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I would move to continue this item until such time that Ron Buskert is back, so we can have a full board to vote on such an expenditure. It's a pretty large expenditure.
In order to make motion, you need to be recognized without comment first.
All right.
I've, I've been reading the rules lately, so I'm, after my last meeting, I'm gonna be a little more strict.
That's my comment.
That's your comment. Okay. And I, I get the feeling that's where this is going to go. What's the time limits on this?
Uh, we are beginning to run into a potential time issue here, relative to getting this, this stuff shipped here and installed in time. So there is, there is a, quite a process in, in production. This stuff is all, is produced for the, for the, the furniture that's going to be made, is made at the time when it's ordered, so.
So the fifteenth?
We are right on the edge of, you know, we don't have a lot of flexibility anymore if we go to the fifteenth.
Okay, that's a good question. Any further discussion?
I'll move continuation until next meeting. Second.
Okay. In order to make a motion, you gotta be recognized first. But I'll recognize you. Moved by Farabee and seconded by DeSanto to continue till the fifteenth. Any further discussion? Public, Ms. Hagcock?
Not really in favor of this because there's a timeline, but it looks like it's going that way, so I will vote to continue because at this point, two to two, moves it forward anyway, so.
I'll follow up. I agree with, with that comment. I think pushing the timeline's going to be strict, and we should have the full commission here. I apologize, I should have mentioned Mr. Buskert is gone. He has a, a family emergency that he needs to deal with, and so that's why he's not here today, folks. So with that, is there any further comment from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, continue to the next meeting. Indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Next, we come, item sixteen, items from the highway department. Tom Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Wilson, Pennington County Highway Department. Our first item is authorization for letting of Ag, two thousand eighteen dash one aggregate stockpile project in the cursed dead pit. Pennington County Highway is requesting authorization to let forbid crushing of seventy thousand tons of gravel surfacing in the cursed dead pit in the far northern portion of Pennington County. This is a new pit for Pennington County. The mining permit application has been submitted to planning and zoning for review. Gravel from this location will be used on the Creighton Road, Pedro Road, and Wilson Road, with a few intersecting roads in the area. I'm requesting a motion to authorize the highway department to go to bids for this aggregate, two thousand eighteen dash one aggregate stockpile project, cursed dead pit.
Be my motion.
Second, Ms. Hagcock.
Let me, I, I gotta be consistent. In order to make motions, we gotta get recognized first. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start doing that.
Okay.
Just where everybody's, yeah. But I'll recognize you for approval, seconded by DeSanto.
We'll get used to it.
We'll, yeah, it'll take a little while, but we're gonna, we're gonna get there, folks. But any further discussion from the, the audience? Any from the board? Mr. Farabee.
Could we've gotten any further away?
Pardon?
Could we've gotten any further away?
This is up where the roads are. If you look at our county map, the roads all come right from there.
But we've gotten any further away, though.
Nope, can't get much further than that. You're right up in the northern, northeast corner of the county, but that's where the roads are.
Thank you, Mr. Farabee. Any further discussion? Seeing now, we had a motion by Hagcock, seconded by DeSanto for approval. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Our next item is the resolution, two thousand eighteen oh five oh one, extension of authorization for two thousand eighteen seasonal load limits to May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. We are requesting the extension of the seasonal load limits on asphalt roads in the Black Hills. The frost has not come out of all of those up there, and they're just coming out of the roads, and the asphalt roads are at risk for heavy loads. We're requesting authorization for the limits to be extended for such a time as determined by the highway department, but not to exceed May thirty-first of two thousand eighteen. This will protect the roads and authorize ticketing of trucks which exceed seven tons per axle in this region. This will also allow us to remove the load limits prior to May thirty-first, when we determine to be safe for the heavy loads to be on our roads. Motion is requested to authorize the chairperson's signature on the attached resolution as required by South Dakota Codified Law thirty-two, twenty-two, twenty-four for this action.
Chairman?
Ms. Hagcock.
Let me be my motion.
Second.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion from the public?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Tom, you probably know, those gravel trucks, the belly dump, or side dump gravel trucks with, I think they've got thirty-six tires on them?
Oh, they've got a pile of them.
What, with a full load, what weight is on those axles, do you think? Full load of gravel?
Well, if they're pulling a pop, they can haul up to sixty ton of gravel, which is monstrous. But for loads per axle, I'd have to know the configuration of the trailers. I don't, I couldn't say right off the top of my head.
And an awful lot of those running around on the roads even after the frost limits, but maybe, maybe they don't exceed it, so.
They would have, if they, I couldn't tell you without looking at it and seeing the, the configuration and seeing how it's all set up.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Farabee.
The, the loggers complaining at all?
Pardon?
The loggers complaining at all?
Um, we're hearing from the loggers, but I'm trying to protect our roads.
We're, we're not hauling anything up there, are we? You're talking mostly, really, it's mostly west, right?
It's the roads we, um, west of Highway seventy-nine that we're talking about, yes. Up in the hills.
And, and we're not doing anything to, we, the county, until the roads get good, we're not going to bust them up.
Until we, we feel that, we're not hauling anything, though.
Our concern is the, is the loggers, mostly.
Yeah. But it's any hauling, including materials coming in on high, on Nemo Road, materials coming in on other roads.
Thank you.
Motion on floors for approval. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tom. Next, we come to item number seventeen, which is the variance ordinance number fourteen, an approval of a second approach by Ms. Shelby.
Good morning.
Shelby, your first name and?
Shelby.
Shelby.
Yep. Good morning. I'm Shelby Johnson. I am requesting for variance to ordinance fourteen to allow for an additional approach on the noted property. The property is owned by Yardley and Company, or Rick Johnson, which is my father, who is also in support of this. We, I am currently in the process of applying for a conditional use permit for the property to allow for an event venue on the property. And so, per the fire administrator's recommendations, is to have a one-way loop through the property so that emergency vehicles would have no resistance when they're going in, and so the traffic flow would be just in and out. The property, let's see, yeah, I think that's basically it. Do you have any questions?
Shelby, nice job. Mark?
No question. No, not another mark, sorry.
Your last names.
Good morning, Mark Shock, Pennington County Highway Department. Excuse me. I, I spoke with Ms. Johnson about this a few days ago, so I checked into the situation. Just a little background, what we have up in that area. The location of the, the proposed business venture and approach is about eight more, eight miles north and two and a half miles east of Quinn, South Dakota. So it's quite a ways from Rapid City here. The address is nineteen eight forty Kelly Hill Road. It's on a three-mile stretch of Kelly Hill Road between Quinn Road and Bigfoot Road. But actually, this is a third approach on an eighty-acre parcel. Those are Ag approaches that are in place right now, and they want to, of course, put a business venture there. The two existing approaches are one on each end of the eighty acres, or about a half, close to a half mile apart. Their ADT, excuse me, average daily traffic on Kelly, the stretch of Kelly Hill Road, is seventy-two vehicles per day. And that was, mind you, in September of two thousand fifteen. We do our traffic counts on a three-year basis, so it'll be due again this year. Speed limit in that area is about fifty miles an hour, or is fifty miles an hour. The road surface is gravel, last gravled in two thousand fifteen, so it's in pretty good shape there. We're on an eight-year cycle for gravel surfacing. Sight distance is adequate in both directions, relatively flat ground. I guess bottom line is, the highway department does not support or oppose an additional approach in this location. Of course, additional approaches add to the hazard of public travel. But at the same time, in this sparsely populated area, and in a somewhat remote location, we feel that any hazard, additional hazards would be minimal. Any additional traffic generated by this venue would be typically limited to weekends, we feel. The highways department asks that if, if the commission decides to approve this additional approach, we would ask that it be a minimum of twenty-eight feet wide. That's what we, ordinance fourteen requires for a commercial approach. It would also need a fifteen-inch culvert for drainage, and we would also ask that the smashed ends of the easternmost approach, the existing approach, the smashed ends of those culverts be repaired or just pulled open to, just to get proper drainage in the area.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Mark, that section of road there, it's level, right? I mean, for the most part, where that new entrance is going to go in, for probably a mile and a half, one direction, and?
The road itself is basically fairly level. We did take shots. Actually, the drainage from where the proposed approach is to the cross culvert to the east, or the natural drainage, we've got about nine-point-four inches of- or the natural drainage, we've got about nine-point-four inches of drop. So that's not very much. Yes, it's fairly flat.
I think I'm asking more in, in regards to visibility of the approach is a mile, isn't it, from either direction?
Yes, way more than adequate for, for that area, yes.
Any further discussion?
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I think with that motion, are you looking at including the twenty-eight-foot width, the recommendations of the, to have a twenty-eight-foot wide approach with a fifteen-inch culvert and would you say smashed culvert ends on?
Typically, we do not require flared ends on the culverts, according to ordinance fourteen. It's not a requirement.
It's by ordinance fourteen, Lloyd.
By ordinance fourteen? Is that included in the motion?
Yep.
And seconders okay? Motion maker and seconders okay with your recommendations? Further discussion anymore from the public? Board? Seeing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Shelby. Item eighteen. Need to go into Board of Adjustment, or, we got ten minutes.
It's ten to ten.
Let's, Ms. Hancock, you gonna make a motion to go to break? Ten minutes?
It's ten to ten.
What's ten to ten? Oh, geez, that doesn't. I broke my glasses. Let's, let's move, let's move on to the agenda. I've got some items that I put on there. We can go through those if Board so chooses.
Committee reports, proof of vouchers, that kind of thing.
Yeah. Items from Chair and Commission members.
Mr. Chair, we're, we're not supposed to be doing that. We can go to executive session, and that's not public, but if we need anything, but we can't do agenda items till ten-thirty. In case anybody wants to speak to them, that's, we said that years ago.
So you guys don't wanna move ahead with the agenda, just hold off till ten-thirty?
Actually, items from planning and zoning is at ten-thirty, but are these nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one planning and zoning?
Mr. Chair, there's?
Mr. Farby.
Since they follow in that order, if the public wanted to talk on these items, then they're cut out if we do them ahead of the ten-thirty timeframe.
What does it say? Chairman, does it say that these items are taken up after ten-thirty or the?
No.
Planning zoning is at ten-thirty?
No, they don't. I, I, I think we're splitting hairs myself, but I think that's one of the reasons why I've got stuff added on item B, this commission agenda and how to go about this. So this commission decides that they don't wanna move forward and try to speed up the meeting by going through those, then we need to, someone needs to make a recess to ten-thirty and everybody can wait till that time.
Unless we have executive session, and I don't know if we have one, but we can do that.
Actually, we've done committee reports and vouchers before, too. So we've done that a long time.
Yeah, we have.
The public has never spoke on committee reports that I know of, maybe vouchers, though.
Okay, that's our options.
Okay. Let's do ten-thirty, just make it easy.
Hancock made a motion to recess to ten-thirty.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Good morning, everybody. We'll come out of break, and I'd look for a motion to go into Board of Adjustments.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by Hancock. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. I'll recognize PJ.
Sure. PJ, kind of a director of planning department. Item A on the Board of Adjustment is variance eighteen-oh-two. The applicant is Mary Alexander with the agent as Dallas Alexander. The applicant is requesting a continuation of this item to the May fifteenth, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
That be my motion.
Motion made by Hancock, continue to the May fifteenth.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion from public? Board? Hearing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item B.
Good morning. Cassie Bolstad, Assistant Planning Director. Item B is a variance request, eighteen-oh-three. This is a request to allow single-family residents with seven bedrooms to be used as a vacation home rental in a planned unit development. The applicant here is Deerfield Cabins. Dion Winia is the agent. He is in the audience today. This is a request as a variance to Section 319-F2 of the zoning ordinance to allow a seven-bedroom vacation home rental. As this property exists today, it's zoned as a PUD. It's two-point-four acres, currently contains a single-family residence, a picnic pavilion, and an on-site wastewater treatment system. This request to have a seven-bedroom vacation home rental was routed through the interdepartmental review process. A couple items of note did come back. The county fire administrator had several concerns regarding the layout of the structure, that it is not suitable for eighteen people to sleep in, that it needs to be fire sprinkled, that current parking is inadequate and not safe. He also had concerns with the current addressing, and the county environmental planning supervisor also did note that there is a concern with the existing picnic pavilion, as it does not have a floodplain development permit for its approved location, and it was built at a different size than it was permitted for. So on March nineteenth is when we received this variance request. Section 319-F2 of the zoning ordinance states that VHRs are limited to a maximum of five bedrooms. On March twenty-eighth, staff did receive a letter of approval from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources for eighteen nightly guests for this property. And then on April fourth, the applicant actually did apply to expand their on-site wastewater treatment systems, specifically the drain field, to accommodate the seven-bedroom residents and the basement that was previously finished without a building permit. He has since applied for that building permit and brought that into compliance. Staff is working on the picnic pavilion issue with the floodplain development permit. It was not included in a floodplain development permit from 2004. Staff is working with the applicant to try to correct that issue and bring all of that into compliance. The applicant did also provide originally a site map of designated parking areas for the vacation home rental. This was his original parking proposal, and it appeared that the applicant, that there might be some concerns with that parking proposal as it appeared to block ingress and egress and also potentially impact the feasibility of cars passing through, emergency vehicles turning around, those kinds of things. The road widths in this portion of the property vary between twelve and fifteen feet in width. The widest portion is in front of the residence. The applicant has since updated his parking proposal to this. According to our zoning ordinance, if he were to be approved for a seven-bedroom vacation home rental, he does need seven parking spaces. So as you can see, his updated proposal indicates three in front of the house and then two directly to the southeast of the house, and then down there in the lower portion of the driveway as well would be two parking spaces. Originally, there were also addressing concerns on this property, as the address on the mailbox was incomplete and there was no address posted on the house. The applicant has since corrected that. We have received pictures from the applicant of the corrected address on the, on the mailbox and also an address posted on the residence, so that has been taken care of. The applicant has also applied for a major planned unit development amendment to amend the existing PUD to allow this house to be a vacation home rental. He does have to get approval of this variance first. If this variance is approved, then he will actually go through and get potential approval of his PUD amendment to allow this to be used as a vacation home rental. His PUD amendment was heard by the Planning Commission on the April twenty-third meeting, but was recommended to be continued to their May fourteenth meeting to allow this variance to be heard first. There are four criteria for a variance request that the Board of Adjustment needs to consider. The first one is that specific circumstances or conditions, such as exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting exist. Staff has verified through a site visit that there are no particular physical conditions that would warrant approval of this variance. The second one is that the variance does not grant a UTE, which is otherwise excluded from that particular district. As I stated, they will still need to obtain approval of the major planned unit development amendment prior to operation of the vacation home rental if this variance request is approved. The third item is that due to specific circumstances or existing conditions, strict application of the zoning ordinance would be an unwarranted hardship. Strict application of the ordinance would not allow this vacation home rental to be seven bedrooms. There is no physical hardship, and the applicant, from my understanding, did indicate during the April twenty-third Planning Commission meeting that the vacation home rental could be operated as a five-bedroom. And the fourth is that the granting of the variance is not contrary to the public interest and is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Granting this variance does not appear to be contrary to the public interest, as we have not received any complaints or concerns regarding this request. However, it would allow for a seven-bedroom vacation home rental, which is not in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, and concerns have been raised by the county fire administrator regarding this variance request. In addition, there are concerns regarding the means of supplying appropriate parking, adequate ingress and egress, and we had addressing concerns which have now been addressed. So if the Board of Adjustment chooses to approve this variance, staff recommends three conditions be included.
Cassie, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Is it Dion?
Yes.
Dion, you understand how the variance committee works and you have to come forward, please, Dion? You have to have a majority of, I think it's majority, am I correct?
Or?
You have to have unanimous vote for the people here today in order to get this approved. We're short one commissioner because he has had a family emergency. Did you want to try and continue on or continue this till we have a full board?
Yes, they had explained to me that it would take a unanimous vote today to approve it, and I'm okay with being heard yet today.
You're okay with that today?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any com, do you have any comments on your item that you'd like to talk about?
The main thing that we, as a group, we have four families that are a part of this, all friends, family friends. We have big families. We've been coming out here every year for the last ten years, and I have eight children. And now one of my children is married and has a daughter, now another one is getting married next month. And so we have a hard time finding places like this, which was one of the reasons we were looking for a property like these properties. When it came, the opportunity to buy the cabin that is next door to this one came up, the owner requested that both properties be sold at the same time. He wanted to sell them as a package deal. We didn't understand at that time that there was a problem with seven bedrooms and there was no building permit to have those sec, those last two bedrooms in there. So we were unaware of that. But when we go to look for a larger place, we have a hard time finding a larger place for our families. The other families that are involved have the same situation. One of the families, there's like twenty-two altogether that go on vacation. We also have families back home that have wanted to rent this because it's big enough for their families. And so because of that, and because the, the cabin next to it is already rated an eight-bedroom, four-bath cabin, and rated for twenty people, we figured that the use of this house as a seven-bedroom would be consistent with the, the neighbors. And so the other two cabins are four-bedroom, one bath, and we have talked to owners for those cabins, and I actually had a conversation with them this morning because I was out there and they had just come for the, the season, and they had no problem with that either. We want to maintain it really well. We, our property manager has a strict rule against no big parties, no wedding parties, that kind of thing that would happen at the, the residence. And so, yeah, we just saw it as being consistent with the next-door neighbors and with, consistent with the neighborhood. Most of the cabins that we can find that would sleep eighteen are in that area, up Deerfield Road. If you look on Vacation Rental by Owner, there's six of them in Pennington County that are available that would be the size of like eighteen people. And five of them are, were up Deerfield Road, and one of them was closer to Rapid City.
So Dion, what did you do to, to address the fire recommendations?
We are still working on that. We had called the Fire Protection Company last Tuesday. They were out there on Friday morning. He wanted to talk to the county to find out the reason why the sprinkling was hap, would need to happen. He was not sure what the reasoning was, so he needed to talk to them. And so we still, we still need to work that part out.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Cassie or Dion?
Mr. Chair, I do have.
Mr. Farby.
Refresh me, either director or assistant director of planning, I thought that PUD was all four of those units, three, three cabins or three whatever in the house, but there are two PUDs there?
All three structures are not under the PUD, but I can have the staff member that worked on that originally answer the question if there's anything different.
Well, I thought at one time they were all, the, the three cabins or whatever in that house were all one PUD, but that was never the case?
Well, the use for this one wasn't a vacation home rental.
Well, understandably, it was to manage the other three.
Yeah.
I thought, but, so.
Is requesting a change in use, which is why it's a major amendment to the PUD?
Mr. Chair, my question is, there's, there's three identical units sitting there, not counting the house. And those three, I thought, were all one unit, but the other two, you own one, the other two are split off?
Split off, they're all on their own lots. I don't know who owns the other two.
Yeah, it's, it's one PUD. All four lots are one PUD. And then the, there's two that are owned. One is by a family from St. James, Minnesota, that comes out in the summer, and the other was bought last summer by a family from Brandon, South Dakota.
And one thing to point out is, in condition number one of the existing PUD allows for vacation homes on three of the lots, but not on Lot forty-three, which is the lot in question. Hence the amendment.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, what I'm, what I'm reading here is on page three of eleven, that the planned unit development consists of four lots with one single-family residence, one picnic shelter, and one vacation home. So what happened to the other two vacation homes?
I'm sorry, what were you reading? Because if you're reading condition number one, you left some words out. I can read number, condition number one as it's written. That the planned unit development consists of four lots with one single-family residence and one picnic shelter on Lot forty-three, and one vacation home and accessory structures on lots forty-one, forty-two, and forty-four, and all structures be stick-built. That's the existing condition.
Well, I thought all three of those brown units were vacation homes, but fine, I, I guess. Fine. Thank you.
Okay.
The brown ones are vacation homes. The white one is the only one that was the single-family residence.
Any further questions? Dion, can you explain to me, I know this was at the Planning Commission, I was on the Planning Commission when we heard this, the septic system?
Yes.
Is it?
What was found was that the county records had it as a five-bedroom house. The septic system is what, the equivalent of nine-hundred square feet septic system, and the tank is two-thousand-fifty gallons. With, the state had approved at that time nine people in residence. And so we worked with the state and a contractor out here to see what it would take to expand that to that, a greater amount of people. They said two-hundred-and-twelve feet additional onto it. There's seven-hundred-and-twenty actual feet right now, but the way they built it gives a increase, a percentage increase, so it's the equivalent of nine-hundred. So it's the equivalent of 900. So this would be, um, 1,112 square feet is the proposal in the permit. And then the size of the septic tank at 2,050 was not, it was big enough for the seven bedrooms, but not for a house with a disposal. So we removed the disposal, um, from the residence and want to operate it without a disposal because that would be a, a negative for us anyway with a vacation rental. And so without a disposal, it qualifies, um, for the right size.
Cassie, do you have anything else to follow up on?
Chairman?
Mrs. Hagcock.
I have a motion to approve.
Second?
There's been a motion to approve. It's by Hagcock, second by DeSanto.
In the audience?
Discussion, we have a young lady in the audience that wants to speak.
[laughing].
Thank you for, sometimes I get caught in the moment, so.
Commissioner LaCroix isn't the first time and you aren't the first chairman that this has happened to and I reminded them to have the public speak. My name is Joyce Shagru and I'm a, a citizen here today. Uh, I would ask that you adhere to the current ordinance, uh, with the five bedroom restriction and I'll give you a little background on that. I've been on the two committees, citizen committees that developed the ordinance as it's currently, as original and it's been, as it has been revised. And the ordinance was put in place, um, so that there was some protection or recourse for guests of vacation home rentals and for the neighbors. And, uh, there were a couple of small, excuse me, excuse me, businesses that had vacation home rentals in the county, but primarily vacation home rentals were family vacation homes that were rented to cover their expenses of a second home. And so that's been the primary reason for the ordinance. And the ordinance is in addition or a supplement to the state law and administrative rules for sa- health and safety. The restriction for the five bedrooms was a, a good split between a family vacation home and, um, a building that was used for reunions, large gatherings. And, uh, state law at that time, and I don't know that it still is, had a, a split between vacation home rentals and other lodging establishments at five bedrooms. So that's why we used that and there was a lot of discussion about it. What you're seeing with this one are the common problems when you get to a larger, uh, building like this. Parking is a problem. Uh, if, uh, when the final comes through, if you approve this, uh, condition for 18 overnight guests, then there will be day guests and then parking will become an issue in this area. Uh, the septic just borderline, uh, between a, a family vacation home and a larger establishment with more people. Uh, addressing, instructions, all of those things are, are what were discussed. So it, it's been a good break for us. We've had a couple that came in, uh, that were larger and you've denied those. Uh, the ones that surround this probably were there before the ordinance was written. That's why they're in, in business as a vacation home rental. Uh, they predated the ordinance is my guess. Otherwise, I don't think they would have been approved at this point. So that gives you a little bit of background about what we went through, uh, when we, uh, recommended the ordinance and why we did it. And I would just, uh, ask that you, uh, uh, stay with the current ordinance. Uh, they can apparently, according to the backup material, limit it to five bedrooms and, uh, for rental and, uh, they could use it for more for their family, but a rental at five.
Thank you Joyce and thanks for your due diligence you've been.
Chairman?
Ms. Hagcock.
Um, PJ, is, does our ordinance say, thank you, Mr. Shagru, um, five bedroom?
Uh, the vacation home ordinance does, yes. When it was revised by the committee, they limited it to five bedrooms.
Sir, um, are you willing to go to five bedrooms? At this point, um, I'm going to follow the ordinance, so I'll have to withdraw my, I'm going to be up straight, withdraw my motion. If it's not going to be five instead of seven because we said we would follow the ordinance, Ms. Shagru is right.
That would not be my first choice, obviously, or I wouldn't be here today. But, um, yeah, we will go with the commission's request.
So I would amend my motion to make it instead of seven into a five.
Is it okay with the second?
Yeah, I'll second that. I'll, I'm good with that.
So Dion, you understand what, if you want you to follow the ordinance? There's been a motion to second, I'll make a comment because I think you kind of walked into this, some of these rooms are already divided and so forth and that's how they become that way. So I think, I think you could comply to, to the ordinance as stated and, um, so I'd be supporting the motion on the, on the floor. Is there, Mr. Fairby, you look like you got a comment?
Well, the, the agenda item is to request a variance and, and, and my motion in, in that line is to den- deny the request for variance.
You're making a substitute motion?
Well, the, the agenda item is request, the guy's requesting a variance. So my motions, it's motions either to approve or deny and I'm making my motion to deny the request.
Mr. Chair?
Mr., well, there's, first of all, there's no second.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, second, motion for, to deny altogether and seconded by Mr. DeSanto. Mr. PJ?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's what I came up here for. I agree with, uh, Commissioner Fairby. If you deny the variance, then it would default back to five automatically. So that'd be the best way to go. I agree.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we were going to the same place, but.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fairby.
You're welcome. I can speak that way without, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to.
You know, before your motion, you weren't supposed to speak. I'm just, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to be consistent now a little later, but go ahead.
Well, I, I couldn't have said a point of order and went that route because this is the, anyway, I wanted to thank, uh, Ms. Shagru. She was on both BHR committees, as she said, and, and there was a lot of, and I attended a few of them, there was a lot of give and take and a lot of, uh, discussion and cussing and whatnot and I guess they didn't cuss too much, but, but anyway, uh, did a lot of work and, and we've held the line on the, on the one acre deal and I think Ms. Shagru said that we probably would veer away from that. We've, we've held it on a one acre, so probably should hold a one acre, or hold the line on this one too. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fairby. So you understand, Dion, by, by the denial, you go to the, what the motion was to go back to the original five and you can follow the ordinance as stated? Okay. We're all clear on that. Any further discussion from anybody in the audience? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion on the floor for denial indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, this is getting me confused. All not in favor indicate aye. Motion carries unanimously, sorry.
Funny.
So now we come to consent agenda.
Make a motion, come out of Board of Adjustment?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Second?
Move to come out of Board of adjustments, seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Sure. Um, consent agenda. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item C, second reading of ordinance amendment 1803 from Pennington County to amend sections 205B and 205C, General Agriculture District, and section 212C from Heavy Industrial District of the Pennington County Zoning Ordinance. The Planning Commission approve, uh, recommendation, approved a recommendation, uh, for you to approve. Item D, layout plat 1738 for Dorothy Johnson Estates, Great Western Bank, the personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estates. It's been recommended to be continued to the August 21st, 2018 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Item E, first reading and public hearing of rezon 1710 and comprehensive plan amendment 1709 for Dorothy Johnson Estates, Great Western States Bank, the personal representatives for Dorothy Johnson Estates. It's been recommended to be continued to the August 21st, 2018 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Item F, layout plat 1807 for Kenneth Smith. It's been recommended to be continued to the, uh, June 19th, 2018 Board of Commissioners Meeting. Item G, minor plat 1806 for Idyllwise Mountain Lodging, fist land surveying as the agent and approval's been recommended. Item H, first reading and public hearing of major planned unit development amendment 1801 for Deerfield Cabins LLC, Dion, as the agent, has been recommended to be continued to the June 7th, 2018 Board, Board of Commissioners Meeting. Item I, road construction within a section line right of way review, uh, CS 1602 for Cody Shad. It's been recommended to be continued to the June 7th, 2018 Board of Commissioners Meeting.
Thank you PJ. Is there any member of the citizens in the audience that'd like any item removed from the consent agenda? Any of the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
It's moved by DeSanto.
Chairman, I'll second that. [laughing].
Ms. Hagcock seconded. I know. I need to work on this a little bit.
No, you're doing good.
We'll get it right.
You're doing good.
So we got a motion to approve the consent agenda with a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
I have to tease you, Mark.
Got me, got me on that one.
You did good.
Brittany, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good morning, Brittany Molitor, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Um, this item is a layout plat PL 1805 to create, to create lots two, three, four and five of Pangcrat subdivision. Um, this property has been in front of you. Um, previously there was a layout and a minor plat to create Lot 1, um, of Pangcrat subdivision previously. Um, there is a small portion of this, um, tax parcel that will remain unplatted with this request. Um, two of these lots, um, will actually be created just to support billboards. There will be, um, easements, um, created for access to those lots. Um, the lots will range in size from 1.642 acres to 18.345 acres. They are currently zoned, um, Highway Service District. Uh, this was, um, routed through the Interdepartmental Review and the only item of concern that came from the Department of Transportation, they indicated that there will be no other accesses allowed for these lots. Um, staff is recommending approval of this layout plat with 10 conditions.
Thank you, Brittany. Any comment from citizens? Seeing none? Board?
Chairman?
Ms. Hagcock?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Hagcock.
Second.
Seconded by Fairby. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
PJ?
Next one, all right. Uh, next item is a conditional use permit. Usually the Board of Commissioners does not hear a conditional use permit unless it's been appealed as a decision's usually made at the board, at the Planning Commission level. However, this item was, the file was misplaced in our office and so we brought it be, we were not going to be able to make the, uh, advertising and the hearing dates for the applicant. So to get it on this, the meeting as soon as we could, we brought it before the board, um, requested that it be heard by the Board of Commissioners on this date. They approved unanimously for that. Uh, this will go back to the board, um, for review after a decision is made by the Board of Commissioners. This is conditional use permit 1805 to allow for caretaker's residence in a suburban residential district. The applicant are Harry and Rosina Hilgeman with the agent Brett and Linda Hilgeman and the subject property is 2.59 acres. Um, the applicants are looking for a caretaker's residence to take care of their, um, of their parents. Uh, this is allowed through, uh, our ordinance with a conditional use permit. The caretaker's residence is proposed as a 65 by 31 foot, four bedroom, two bathroom modular home, um, and the, uh, floor plan is included with it, with your staff report. The planning staff is in, uh, possession of two letters from the doctors, uh, stating that continuous care is required, which is part of our ordinance, which is a requirement and they've met that. Um, the agent and the landowners are aware that one's care is no longer needed, uh, that one of the two residents must be removed from the subject property, um, or an approved subdivision variance be obtained or they subdivide the property. Um, is my understanding that, uh, the, there is one mobile home on the property right now and they're looking to do that modular stick build. And at the point, if it comes to that, when care is no longer needed, the mobile home will be the one that's removed and the stick built was the one that will remain. Um, the existing conditions on the property at this time is again, suburban residential, 2.59 acres. There is no flood hazard, um, on the property. Uh, there is a cabin from, a building permit from the 1990s. Um, it's used as cold storage at this time and that has been, um, verified by onsite visit by staff. There is the double wide mobile home which has been on the property since 1994, shed since 95 and access is off of sanctuary place. There's also an old outhouse structure on the property which is no longer in use by the applicants and they have an intent, uh, to remove that from the property. This was routed through the Interdepartmental Review. County Highway Department had no concerns as long as the same approach off of sanctuary place was used for the caretaker's residence, which is what the applicant's intention is. Um, that's a guy, okay. The fire, there's somebody wanted to call in for this.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Uh, the county fire administrator has no concerns, but is recommending that, uh, turnarounds, uh, be provided because of the nature of the use as a caretaker, there's a possibility for emergency vehicles on the property. Um, there's an existing, uh, parking lot at the existing residence which probably just needs to be widened a little bit and then build a similar, larger, um, turnaround area at the proposed new modular home so that the emergency vehicles, if they come to the property, don't have to back out. They can turn around. Um, no other concerns were found with the Interdepartmental Review. There are five factors that need to be considered with a conditional use permit. The first is that the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for use is already permitted and upon property values within the immediate vicinity are not affected. Um, at the time of the staff report, there were no calls of concern or complaint about this request. Uh, there have been some, uh, calls that were mainly taken Friday and yesterday and there's one that was, uh, I believe an email that was provided to you from one of the neighbors. Um, they have some concerns, they have some questions, a lot of those items we don't directly address, especially the color of the, of the structures. We don't, we don't regulate that. Um, but they did also, um, recommend, you know, if you do approve it, then they would request that you take some action on, uh, not making it an ISO, I believe is the main concern. Um, the second item is the effect upon normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding vacant property for use is permanent or not affected. Allowing the condition use should not affect the normally orderly development or improvement of the surrounding property. Um, item three to be concerned, uh, taken into account is utilities, access road, drainage and other necessary facilities are provided. An onsite wastewater treatment system will be installed to serve the caretaker's residence and existing onsite wastewater treatment system is to be pumped and inspected for the purposes of issuing a new operating permit. Uh, since the staff report was written, uh, the, um, operate, the applicants have scheduled a pump and inspection on that property to obtain that operating permit. They've been very diligent about that. Item four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. Again, du- there is plenty of space for the parking for the two residents and again, as recommended, that the emergency turnarounds be provided at both residents if approved. Item five, that measures are taken to control the offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise and vibration and lighting, uh, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance. The proposed conditional use permit by its nature should not, um, affect the, uh, or should have limited odor, fumes, dust and noise, vibrations and intrusive to the point where it's not a nuisance. On March 28th, again, the applicant provide, uh, applied for the conditional use permit. The Planning Commission has unanimously requested that the Board of Commissioners look at this to keep the process going for the applicant. And due to the nature, we are looking for the, uh, turnarounds at both residents and with that, staff would recommend approval of conditional use permit 1804 with 12 conditions.
Thank you PJ. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak on half or do you, is it good? You're good. Uh, any other citizen comment on item K, the conditional use? Seeing none, there.
Okay. There's, uh, the gentleman who provided you the letter has called in. I believe he has some comments.
What's his name?
Steve.
Steve.
Steve, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, Steve, we're going to take comment now, so you can share what, what you need to share.
Okay, uh, thank you. I, I appreciate the opportunity to call in. I live in Pierce, so I wasn't able to, to come out there. I shot Amy a, a quick email. I shot Amy a quick email yesterday, so thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to call in. And, you know, I live, I have the place at 12650 Nemo Road, and, which is directly across from the property that we're talking about. And, I mean, we see that property, I'm probably one of the most affected neighbors there, because we, you know, have the place right across the road there, so we have direct line of sight to the property and to where the parents live at this time. So, you know, there are some things that I wasn't quite sure on, on what the plan was, a little clarification, I guess. We were wondering, and I did go talk to Brad's, I think it's Brad's mother, and, you know, she wasn't quite sure on exactly where it would be located, and I don't know if it was going to be, she said, behind the existing structure. And then I looked at the picture on the, you know, on the presentation. It looks like it's going to sit more, what I would call north and south along the outhouse there, and back a little bit, I mean, towards the west end of the current structure. Is that correct?
That's what it looks like to me.
Okay, and it says, you know, that it'll be a modular home, and I guess, you know, modular to me means it's a stick-built, you know, home, and then moved in, rather than a double-wide trailer, and a manufactured home. And I just wanted to get some clarification on what type that would be, and if it is a modular, will it be, you know, on a structure, a slab, or a foundation type? And I understand that once the caretaker's question is done, that the parents', you know, structure would be moved, and this would become the permanent structure on the property. So I guess I'd like to give clarification on what type of, if it is in fact a modular home.
Steve, I can try to address some of that for you, and maybe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. You know, modulators are, yeah, they're built stick, but stick-built standards are to home standards, and a modular nowadays are about the same. What I can say, I think even modular mobile homes, I think the requirement is now that they have to be put on peers and all that, as long as, to meet HUD standards and the requirements. Anything newer, I think it's 2016, if I am correct. Someone's gonna test me on this, but, so it would be put on peers required to be so. I guess I'm looking at more of what you're asking, Steve. You know, mobile homes, modulators look pretty much the same. Some have vinyl siding, some have hardwood siding. Steve?
Okay, yeah, and who's speaking?
Lloyd Lacray.
Oh, okay, all right. You know, I, like I say, we can see this property from our front deck. I work in Pierce now, we bought this property several years ago, and, you know, to retire out there once we're done working here. And, you know, we look across that property and from our deck and our living room and our kitchen and everything, and, you know, I, we wanna be good neighbors, and, you know, I did mention the color in there, and I heard the gentleman that was doing the presentation that, I don't know if that's, you know, by ordinance or whatever, but, you know, it'd be nice to have it be a color that, you know, blends in with the beauty of the hills, you know, and not have a white structure there, I guess, that kind of sticks out. And, you know, if he was sitting, if the plan is to sit that more, oh, in north and south direction, you know, that would help somewhat as far as the visibility.
Steve? I'm gonna ask the applicant to come up and kinda address some of your concerns. Maybe you two haven't talked or not, but if he could.
That'd be great, yeah, I haven't talked to him, so.
Okay, is it Harry? Or is it Brett?
Brett.
Brett? So you hear your neighbor's concerned, he's worried about outlandish color, like a bright blue. Would you be more with the earth tones?
So hot pink is out? No, I'm, yeah, our plan is to, it only comes in two colors, beige and blue, and we're not blue. But our plan was, all along, if we can afford it, and we have to look into that, to put a log-type siding on it, so it literally looks like a log cabin. That has always been our plan. We probably would paint it darker, because I like it darker anyway. So his request is fine with me, it doesn't bother me one bit.
Okay. Steve, you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. And then, you know, the way that would sit on the property is it would be more towards, I guess, the north-south, you know, where it would be like an L, you know, compared to where the parents' place is at. It would sit on a north-south direction rather than east-west?
Yes.
He said yes, Steve.
It would sort of back and some of the road too, in that case. Is that correct?
Yeah, it would sit back further, and it would kind of follow the contour of the hill. So once it's either sided the way we really want it, or painted darker, it would pretty much blend in.
Okay, I didn't hear all of that. Could you repeat that, please?
Go ahead and speak more into the mic, if you could.
Yeah, Steve, what would happen, the plan on it is to set it in that north-south direction to kind of follow the contour of the hill behind it, so it would blend in more to the hill rather than stick out. It would be farther from the road, and the goal, again, for us has always been to make it blend in so much so that it's hard to see.
Okay, all right. And I guess for future subdividing, do you have, I mean, after, and God bless your parents, I hope they're there, for a long time, you know, but in the future, would you have, would you consider subdividing that, or do you plan on just having your place there in the future?
Yeah, we have no plans of subdividing at all. We just want one home on the property.
Okay.
Steve, are you okay with everything?
You know, as far, I know in the, in the presentation, you know, there was some clause in there about, you know, clutter, or old cars, or, you know, things like that, and I guess, you know, your plans are to keep it looking nice, I guess.
Absolutely.
Okay, Steve, we gotta move on, so, but you're satisfied now? Steve?
You know, yeah, I appreciate that very much, and, you know, if I'm out there, it's Brad, correct?
Brett.
Brett?
Brett.
Okay, well, stop down, and, and we'd love to meet you and be a good neighbor with you, and it sounds like you've got our concerns covered, and I really appreciate.
Thanks, Steve.
Cooperation.
Thanks, Steve. We're gonna move on now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, Brett. Any other discussion from citizens? Do we?
Chairman.
We have a recommendation for approval. Ms. Hagcock?
Do we already have a motion?
No motion yet.
Motion to approve?
Motion's been made to approve.
Nice.
Second?
Seconded by DeSanto. So the motion is to approve the conditional use permit with 12 conditions. Any further discussion from the board? Mr. Farby?
Almost missing something. If we approve it, then the Planning Commission has to approve it too.
I think BJ explained that it kind of got missed.
Well, I heard it, but I don't understand. If we approve it, I think we're over the Planning Commission, so what are we doing?
Okay, BJ?
Next process.
So, yeah, so, since it was missed, the motion to the Planning Commission was that it be brought before the board for approval. Per Section 503 of the Pennington County zoning ordinance, subsection B, that is permissible action by the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission is going to look at this as a review. The board has done this on several occasions before we actually added the second meeting in December, because we had such a backlog of items of people trying to get into homes before Christmas time. This has been done before, there is a precedent set by the board on these type of actions.
Do you have a follow-up?
Well, if we approve it and they don't, then what happens?
I don't, you'd have to ask them on what their opinion is going to be. But my indication during the meeting, having been at the Planning Commission, is I don't think they would have sent it to you guys if they didn't plan on it. It was unanimous decision. There was no talk against this. There was no dissent. They seemed in favor of, but again, nobody knows until the actual meeting.
Once again, it says for Planning Commission's review and approval. So that means they could overrule us.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for approval, and a second. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Chairman?
Ms. Hagcock?
I think L wants to be continued, if I'm correct.
Yes, ma'am. Item L is first reading and public hearing of ordinance amendment 1804. Ernest Getty as the applicant, Tina Malawi as the agent. Ms. Malawi, right before 10:30, before the Planning Commission items, requested that this be continued to the May 15th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting, so that there be a full Board of Commissioners.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Moved for continuance by Hagcock, seconded by Farby. Any citizen input? One wants? Okay. Board? No further discussion? Motion on the floor to continue the May 15th meeting. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Item M?
Item M is an update on the 2020 Census Bureau assignment that the Planning Department is working on. Our planner too is our GIS expert in our office and has been working with the Census Bureau on this. He's kind of the point person for this project. He's been to Luca Training in Pierce, and Luca is the local updating and census addressing operation, and there's a guide that has been submitted inside the packet for you, kind of an update on what Luca is about. So every period, once in a while periodically, we'll come in, probably every three or four months, just update you on the progress. Basically, it's taking a list that the Census Bureau sends and comparing it to what we have here, and then sending back the most up-to-date item and list of addresses that we can. Staff also is working with long-range planners and GIS supervisors with the city of Rapid City on this. And technology is being leveraged highly on this project.
So we'll have that soon, BJ? And we're just to acknowledge?
Yep, just kind of an update.
Informational.
Yep.
Okay. Item, we'll move right along unless anybody has any questions for PJ on the census. Seeing none, we'll move on. Item M?
Item M is just kind of a, it was continued from the April 3rd, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. It's the formation of a mineral mining committee. This was a task assigned to the Planning Department to come up with a structure and format of a mineral mining committee. So staff had some meetings with people who have been involved with putting together a mineral mining ordinance previously. A lot of times during the gravel, mining ordinance hearings, Lawrence County was brought up quite a bit as an example of what to look at. So we actually met with staff from Lawrence County. We met with representatives from a current mineral mining operation inside western South Dakota, and we came up with a list of citizen committee, people who have expertise in certain areas, and that's just our recommendation. Feel free to add or subtract as much as you want, so.
Chairman?
Ms. Hagcock?
I think we should continue this, or postpone it, until we're done with the first hearing and the first ordinance, meaning we have a declaratory ruling, we have a stay coming up. I would ask that we postpone this indefinitely until we figure out when that's done. That way, we can move from one ordinance to the other. I still think there's one more thing, but there's still people that want to speak, and they want to speak on the mineral mining committee, which I think would be a good idea to take all the input for a few times, even if we have to put it on here a couple times, of what they're thinking on this committee to move forward for the future. I think that's a positive.
Thank you, Ms. Hagcock, and I think I agree. I think most of you here that want to speak on this, I think what we're gonna need to do is, I think, you know, towards the end of the mining ordinance, we went with a three-minute rule, and I think, and speaking rule, and I think that's probably a good process to follow and continue on with this, because I see there's quite a few people here. So, citizens that want to speak, how many want to, raise your hand. Okay? So what we'll do is we'll go with, we'll let you come forward before any motions are made. Explain to us what you'd like to see, or whatever you have to say, but we'll do the three-minute deal. If you want to turn some of your time over to someone else, you can do that. You can also, if you have any written statements that you want to send in to Ms. Holly, you can do that also. So what I'll do is, I'll tell you what, I'll just start, it seems like this whole side so far is, we'll just start with the front row and kind of work our way around, if that's okay. Does everybody agree with that? I seen one person stand up.
I have from the front row a request that I go first.
Yes.
Okay, they're all agreement, come on up.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
May I suggest that we stick to the subject of the committee and not move into expanding on our opinions of what should be in the ordinance?
He's got a point, so we'll.
Mr. DeSanto, that is exactly what I want to approach.
I'll second that motion.
Let me, let me just reiterate that one time, one more time, that we stick to this ordinance discussion and the makeup, please. You ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
May I begin?
Yep.
Okay. Good morning, thanks for this opportunity, brief opportunity. I have seen the list, as it's been proposed. I have drafted legislation for the state legislature. I have worked on numerous civil litigation actions in front of agencies involving regulations. I would like to, as I have previously requested, be a member of this committee. My concern is that if this is going to be a real ordinance, that we make sure that we protect our interests in the county, not in conflict with the state, but to supplement those interests, because this mine is our water supply. I can't think of anything more critical than that. And what I note, and with all due respect to Mr. Obata, who I don't know, I don't know how the citizen representative was cast, but my, I have many, many ideas. I've gone over the Lawrence County ordinance in detail. I have many ideas that I would like to help with the drafting of this, which I think will not prohibit anything, but will, unless it really would be contrary to our public interest, which would include not realistically protecting our water resources. So I would like to throw my hat in the ring to do this. I'm very serious about this. I live along Rapid Creek, I have many friends, I've friends who have ranch outside of Rapid City, but dependent upon this water. My neighbors, you know, I want my grandkids to be in the place where I live, and I've watched decades of how that whole area's changed. So it's given me a lot of ideas as to how to best, perhaps suggest protecting it from our standpoint. You know, our state is limited in its resources and what it can do. There's already been a discharge violation up there. There are other potential problems. We're just above Lake Pactola. So my interest is, let's develop some good regulations that really we're gonna have a permit, that let it really be a permit. Let the company, let's do the socioeconomic studies, but what if they come out that they're not in our advantage? Something should be in the ordinance for that. We should have a no part and not just a yes part, but what would be the kinds of things that our county would be concerned enough about? A permit application as proposed, the lack of government regulation. A permit application as proposed, the lack of government regulation or inspection, detection of problems for leaks? What can we incorporate into this ordinance to really protect us in a way that the folks in Pierre, despite their best efforts, might have a hard time doing that? Just from the reality distance. Thank you.
I need, could you do your name for the record?
I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Corrigan. Bruce Ellison, I'm a round city attorney. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
Nancy Hilding. I'm president of Perry Hills Audubon Society, and I attended most every meeting of the Sand and Gravel Committee, which actually was formed in April of 2016 and was supposed to be about revising mining, construction, and alternative energy. And you made a motion to that effect in April of 2016. And, and in the records of that, there's no record of who was appointed to the committee. But I, I think you're facing litigation right now. I think that if you go forward with committees that are not balanced, you can allow the citizens to testify at the committee meetings, but in the end, the decision about what's moved forward is made by the committee members, who are the people with the vote. So you, you need a balanced committee, and I don't think that you have that in the sand and gravel. So I think you had pushed forward an ordinance that was very pro-mine, and so then it came to fighting in front of the Pennington County Planning Commission in front of you guys, trying to redraft an ordinance that was very complicated and long, and I, I think it kind of wore you guys out. But I think if you want to have an ordinance coming forward to you that people are not fighting about here, you need to have a balanced committee. And, and this committee that is proposed is absolutely not balanced. I call this a fox guarding hen house committee. And Commissioner DeSanto suggested that many of the people on this could be advisors, but they shouldn't be the people who are voting on the decision. I mean, they could be informing, they could be making suggestions, but they're not the people may, voting to decide what goes forward. So you need something that is much more balanced. You need environmentalists, you need people from neighborhood community associations whose property values and their whole life savings are affected by these mines. So there, there are lots of environmentalists who, who follow mining, who really know just about much about this as, as these people you've identified. And, and then there's people like hydrologists. When you get to hard rock mining, the big issue is water. And so, you know, you, and, and, and so there's all sorts of people that you could ask that could balance this out. This is not balanced, and you are going to be looking at a rerun of what you saw with the sand and gravel ordinance. And the only people who litigate are not just the mines, which you're learning, okay? So I'm, I'm just suggesting this needs a substantial rewrite of who's on it. And I thank you for all of your work.
Thank you, Nancy. Feel like I know you.
What?
I said, I feel like I know you. We seem so much of you.
Yeah. Well, I, I still think you need to amend that sand and gravel ordinance. I don't think that's adequate yet.
Thank you. I'll just reiterate, you can come forward. I'm just going to reiterate that we're talking about the makeup of the.
Committee?
The committee, yeah.
Okay. My name is Gina Parkhurst, and I'm a Rapid City resident. And I have, first I have a question. What is the process for choosing members of this mineral mining committee? Is there a statute, either at the state or county level, that covers this decision? Or is it just made up by this board?
This was a recommendation from staff that came forward. So this is all just a recommendation, folks, of the type of people that we need. You guys have made some good points. I'm taking up your time.
Oh, that's fine. I don't have much to say.
Okay.
I just wanted to get clarification on that because I, I was looking through the Legislative Research Council's website today, and I couldn't find anything. And I called them up, and they said, we can't answer that question. Need to talk to an attorney. So, okay, well, thank you anyway. Okay, so regardless of how the mineral mining committee members are chosen, I would just like to urge that members include people with a variety of different backgrounds, as was previously mentioned. There are many other types of highly qualified people in this area who would be effective and helpful committee members. For example, there are members of organizations that have been working on mining issues in the Black Hills for almost a decade, and some much longer. And there is at least one environmental attorney who would balance the mining industry attorney on the proposed list of committee members. There are environmental policy experts amongst us, even in this room. And there are ecologists, hydrologists, interested citizens. We just heard from attorney Bruce Ellison, who stated he'd be willing to volunteer his time. So I would urge you to take advantage of his offer. He's got a wealth of knowledge and expertise. So I do urge this body to take advantage of this expertise because it would result in a more robust review of the draft ordinance. And a robust review may make the process much smoother and may result in a better finished product that is workable for all parties concerned, including the mining industry. And in closing, I just want to say thank you for consulting the Lawrence County officials in the planning and zoning department up there, because they've been through this before. And I also appreciate that you're starting a draft ordinance for Pennington County with the Lawrence County Chapter 20 ordinance. I think that's smart, no sense in reinventing the wheel. That'll save time and make the process go a lot faster. And other than that, just try to get more of a balance on this board if you can. I think you can, because we have a lot of expertise in this community and have, I mean, mining industry representation is important, of course, but they certainly could be technical advisors and have more community members who are voting members and other types of experts. And I'm repeating myself at this point, so I will close my comments. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service to our community.
Thanks, Jeanie. Just, just because the light doesn't go off doesn't mean you don't, you have to keep going till it turns on.
I thought I had to keep going. Oh, thank you for letting me know.
Some people tried to fill it, and others, all right, thank you, Jeanie. And those are some good suggestions.
Good morning. I'm Tanya Stans. I just wanted to cover the, I saw on the list it said Native Americans. And again, that's too random and too minute, actually micro to us. Again, there's 16 tribes that need to be notified in this, and there's also other tribes attached. That's just the smallest number that's used. What was the other thing? So when dealing within this additional committee, mineral mining committee, now, just to keep this in our perspective, that it doesn't matter what type of extraction is happening to that piece of land, it's still a sacred site. So regardless of jurisdiction, when it's, when county is involved, they still have to acknowledge the various tribal nations. And so this goes into gravel and all the other mining areas of, I guess, business. So just keep a reminder of that, that, you know, when you speak of the tribes, make sure that you add the, the large mass of people that are attached to these sacred sites. Now, another thing about the, that always comes to mind when dealing with gravel was, I'm a part of a, a group that does radiation monitoring. And so when dealing with these gravel substances, there's still some, they still have to be checked with these radiation monitors. So the, the county can ask for those standards and address this on that committee through the expertise, different, I guess, professions, you know, dealing with that area. But that needs to be closely watched, because what's going to happen in the long run is this gravel mine or this gravel pit's going to be a little radioactive, and that's going to be cut up and put out into our, wherever we're going to use that, that gravel, and it could have a high radiation content level on there. And that radiation doesn't just disappear because it becomes gravel, it stays very radioactive. So, okay, and I think that was it. Just make sure you don't forget us, you know? We're still here in the Black Hills, and we're still attached to our ceremonies where these sacred sites take place. And that's part of our microbiology healing, you know, by, we have so many ailments to our people, and the disconnect from that, we suffer from that. So we need to have access to these sacred sites, and they can't be destroyed. So thank you again, Tanya Stans, Oklahoma City tribe. Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. We'll do our best to, to work with the committees and the separate tribes.
My name is Jerry Meyer. I currently live in Meade County between Black Hawk and Piedmont. But my family first moved to Rapid City in 1965. Most of my siblings have lived in the Rapid City area since then, as did both my parents. And they're now both deceased, but we have a long history in the Black Hills. I lived in Spearfish for 15 years, Custer for three years, and began to get involved in scrutinizing heap leach gold mining activity when I lived in Missoula, Montana for a few years back in the early 80s. And then moved back to Spearfish, where the heap leach gold mining industry was just taking off. Got very involved with citizens advocacy and environmental groups up there. And a lot of the companies doing the mining weren't U.S. companies. They were, as is Mineral Mountain Resources, an international company, this one being from Canada, who have, in my view, less concern about the local environment and about safeguarding and taking care of it.
So Jerry, are you getting towards?
With the committee, as I read the list, it looks like 10 maybe members are recommended from the mining industry and from people who teach mining, such as school of mines professors. And there are two basic citizen representatives, one from Native Americans and one from maybe an environmental group. But to me, having that committee comprise more of a half and half representation regarding the different perspectives, two perspectives basically, mine, don't mine, or do it in a good way, is how that committee should be constructed and make recommendations.
Mr. Chair. Mr. DeSanto.
Jerry, are you saying that you would like to volunteer for that committee?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
I have bachelor's and master's degrees and a lot of experience in, in kind of overseeing and monitoring what that kind of development.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. I'll just reiterate, folks, you know, nothing's been set. This is just a recommendation. And so what you're coming forward and saying is good, because, just because this is on paper saying you're going to have one representative from each one of these, and they're going to make a decision, that hasn't been decided. The commission's all taken your thoughts and your considerations into how to form it. It may not get formed today or next week or a month from now, but they will consider it. And that's why I reiterate, see what you would like and email it to Holly, and she'll get it to us, so we can sit back and review those also. It helps. So thanks, Jerry. And if you don't feel you need to say much, you can say whatever.
I'll be pretty brief. Cheryl Rowe, Rapid City. I just want to say that as an organizer for Dakota Rural Action, I can tell you that I am amazed at the membership and their expertise. We have such a wide range of people in so many areas that would be so beneficial for this committee. So is there, I just have a question. Is there an application online that people need to fill out, and then it would go to you for consideration? What's the process?
I'll look at this, Holly. We haven't had an application formed.
Correct. We have not opened the committee for any applications yet.
Not yet.
Okay, so I just would ask that whatever the procedure is, that it be shared, and I certainly will share it with our experts.
Thanks, Cheryl. I think once we come up with a decision of the makeup, we'll do public notices for applicants and so forth. I do know some people have sent some stuff in saying already I'm interested, count me in.
Yeah.
Mark's taking notes.
Yeah, we have some.
Deb's taking notes.
Really good people that would be excellent. Okay, thanks.
Good morning. My name is Marvin Cammer. I'm from Meade County, South Dakota. Grandfather walked in here with a freight outfit before there were railroads. Been camped on this land that's still pretty land since that time. Our family knows about water. The most important thing, especially to the West River, should be water. I noticed on this list you got here, I don't see one rural person, one agricultural person. Now, I have a long memory on some things. You may wonder, why is this old clown wearing this vest and a jacket? Still, he didn't throw it down. Well, one reason they didn't throw it down, and I'd probably walk off, forget it. But we've had mines in this country. Even before my grandfather walked in here in 1880 with a freight outfit, and has brought his family in from Germany when the railroad came in by way of Buffalo Gap on south in 86, when Homestead had opened up. No one that I can see on here is going to bring up the subject. The why it's not advisory for anybody to eat fish caught out of the Belfus River over twice a week. It's because of the water they live in is poisoned from previous mining activities. They've spent a pile of money trying to clean that up. They'll never clean it up.
So Marvin, what are your recommendations for the committee?
I'll get to that. We don't know what use that water might have coming from where this place wants to mine it. They'll put it in and bring it back out of the ground. They'll take it out of water, out of Rapid Creek, beautiful stream, the most beautiful stream in western South Dakota. And Castle Creek. I have a brother-in-law that probably owns the oldest right to water on that creek. Lives up there. We can't ignore the role of agriculture. I know droughts. We're in one yet. For two years, those draws out there where I lived did not run water to put water in those stockpots.
Time.
Thanks, Marvin.
And I will recommend you, and I, I don't get here very often, and I think I deserve the right to have a little extra time, please.
Marvin, we've made strict rules before. That's, you had time.
Get an agricultural person on this thing that knows the clue and knows what it about, and knows how to talk about sinkholes that are all over that, that creek bottom.
Thank you, Marvin. We'll do that.
I've got a ranch on the last.
Thank you.
Good morning. I think it's still morning. I'm Lilias Jarding. I live in Rapid City. And my background's in environmental policy. And since this committee would be writing environmental policy, I think it's important that you have people with that background on the committee. I have volunteered to a number of people to serve on the committee. I have drafted legislation, regulations, commented on both many times over the years, and been involved in mining issues since about 1979, off and on, but I have been involved since 1979. On the committee representation, I think there have been some really good ideas directed to you. In terms of the list that exists, I don't understand why there's a sand and gravel mining operation on the list, because as we're talking about hard rock mining here, we're not talking about sand and gravel. I don't understand why there would be an equipment salesperson on the list. They might be good in an advisory. They might be good in an advisory capacity, but I'm not clear on why that person would be on the committee making decisions. And there is both a small-scale mineral mining operation, a large-scale one, and a retired operator. There are three hard rock mining operation representatives on this committee. So I think if you're going to do that, that there should be three people who have the expertise that others have been talking about on the problems with hard rock mining, the issues that it raises in communities. And I also agree with having someone who is clearly rural part of the county representing the rural interests that there are in this county which are substantial. So I guess those are the few comments that I have at this time, but I do hope to be in service to the county.
Thank you. Lilly, what was your title? Excuse me?
Dr. Lilius Jardine. My background, my focus and my PhD research is environmental policy.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Commission. Yes, it is still morning. My name's Rick Bell. I'm a resident here in Rapid City. I'm Chair of the Black Hills Chapter of Dakota Rural Action. I'm also President of this Black Hills Chapter of the South Dakota Engineering Society. I'd just like to do a quick me-too that I'd like to see this committee much more balanced. I think you've heard a lot of the reasons why this is stacked. As someone said, the fox watching the chicken house. So, I know there's a lot of other expertise and I particularly like to recommend you get a hydrogeologist who understands groundwater issues because this is very important for these kinds of hard rock mining operations. And I know we have, again, a lot of experts in this area that could be put on the committee. And so, just like to see it much more balanced. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Well, my name is Carol Hayes, Licensed Clinical Social Worker. I would like to respectfully disagree with my fellow environmentalists. I think that a balanced committee would have only one individual from the mining interests on it, and the rest would be all the other stakeholders in clean water. Consider, the public interest has many, many stakeholders. Only one of those is, are the mining interests. Mining provides few jobs. There is no reason for the commission to favor mining interests over, for instance, tourism. Tourism has, employs an enormous number of people in the Black Hills. I certainly advocate for maintaining tourism against mining. Mining has fewer jobs, it's more environmentally destructive. So again, one mining interest on the committee and all the other stakeholders would actually be a balanced committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you Carol. I think we've done public comment. Does Commissioners have any comment?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Ms. Hickok?
Go first.
I just want to thank everyone for coming up and talking about this. I think that you've brought to our minds some additional people that should be, that were left off of that list, that should be on the list. And I'm in agreement with several of them. And again, I appreciate you taking the time to come here and let us know.
Ms. Hickok?
I too would like to thank everybody. It gives you more of a rounded area of where to go. If I could do it over again, I probably would have put another couple people on our committee, but we did have a school mines expert. We did have a rancher. I didn't know if people knew, Mike was on the committee, he was the rancher. Twaini Bada was a citizen. I was the chair. Brian was in mining. Danielle was only advisor. She did not get a vote. She knew stuff through the state that we were bringing forward. Brittany was an advisor and Bill was from Highway. Everybody else in there, we let sit and talk as much as they wanted to. Ms. Hilding and everybody else put in input on this. This was sent out a lot by Ms. Hilding and Ms. Holly can prove with emails. We had invited whoever and everybody to this meeting. This was a draft of a mining ordinance and that's what we came up with. There was no intention to stack anything or do anything wrong. The citizens asked us to come up with something for a permit because there was nothing. So, hopefully on the next one, that, again, I don't agree with this committee either that's put down here, but I can tell you, we tried to balance the last one. We did miss a couple people, but we did let everybody speak at that meeting. So no one was shut down. So I hope that we do better on the second one. So it's, if we're thinking balanced, I think we're going to have a hard time making everybody happy. That's my bottom line. It's hard to balance it with everybody being okay or not being okay on that meeting. But here's the positive again. You can come to those meetings as much as you want. They're open to the public. So everybody that's not on the committee can go in there and speak. And yes, we did take Ms. Hilding's advice. We took some people's advice on that and we appreciated many people's advice on the backside of that. So, again, hopefully that when we move forward on this, again, I'm not okay with what's on there now. And I do believe we need environmentalists and we do need Native American representation this time because there is sixteen tribes. So, we are listening and we do appreciate everything that you guys have put together here, but not everybody's going to make the committee. But I truly believe people are going to be mad one way or another because I don't think they're going to feel as balanced enough. So hopefully we can get there and we'll keep taking input on it.
Thank you. Let's, see, that's where we deferred from what we were talking about. Now we got people that want to respond to this.
A balanced committee?
Gina Parkhurst, can I just say quickly, I don't think any of us were commenting on the composition of the last committee, at least I know I wasn't.
Thank you.
And I do very much appreciate that I had the opportunity to sit in on those earlier committee meetings that were addressing the sand and gravel portion. And I know friends of mine addressed the earlier group that was talking about solar and wind. And I think everyone I know who participated in those discussions was very happy with their ability to listen in and comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hilding.
Yeah, so I don't think that was an issue. I think what we're all trying to do is comment on today's issue.
Yeah, we're going to get back on track.
Yes, thank you.
We're going to stick on track on this. This is the structure of the Mineral Mining Committee is what this is.
You want a motion?
We're going to, well, Mr. Farby, would you like to speak?
Please. Let me say again, I've said probably at least twice before that each of the five of us elected representatives of our respective constituencies should pick two people, primary and a secondary, to be the voting members. The primary obviously be the primary voting member and the secondary backup. I don't want any experts on the committee. I want experts to advise the people we pick. When the committee members pick the brains of the experts. My two choices, if this is, if I can convince the other two other members to go with me, I want to pick somebody that's knowledgeable, intelligent, and can reason, can listen to the experts, and come to me with a solid recommendation on what we should have for policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farby. I want to thank you guys for your time here today. I just want to recoup back on this. This is the formation of the mining, Mineral Mining Committee. And it's just suggestions. And everything that you said today has been heard. And as I said, get some information to Holly. My guess is on this, we don't want to get started on this committee until the original ones lawsuits and so forth is taken care of. So then we can deal with the issue at hand. That's my feeling of where it's going, but.
Can we ask you what's happening with that?
Well, we, there's been no motion yet, so until we get a motion on the floor, then I could.
He was asking what was happening in our other situation.
I can't comment on the other situation. It's legal and I can't speak on it. I made one exception, I guess I can't really. This is what happens when we.
And I appreciate that. Democracy can be a cumbersome thing. I just urge in the, when you consider how long to put this off.
Yeah.
We have a really major project which is looming in our community. And I urge you not to put this off too long because this is probably going to be one of the most important things, at least that we know of, that our county is going to be facing in terms of a hard rock mining proposal. So please don't wait too long so that our county can be involved in the permit process when it gets to the point of applications by Mineral Mountain. So, thank you.
Thank you. Nobody wants, looking for a motion.
We making a motion to?
I, I think this needs to be probably, instead of giving dates, postponing indefinitely till, I think until we deal with lawsuit. We can put another date on it if somebody wants to, but I'd suggest indefinitely because if you're putting dates out there, then you're giving, you're giving false hope.
Chairman?
Ms. Hickok?
I'll make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Second.
It's been moved to postpone indefinitely by Hickok, second by Farby. She'd like to speak.
Chairman, why I'm saying that is, for one thing, we did go through a resolution, thank you, Board, on the water. And they have, I don't know if you've heard, but they are not going to go through the process. And so, this Board, thank you, did a positive thing. I don't know what's going to happen from there, but we also have a lawsuit. So I think we have a few things and a little bit of time to figure out what's happening with the lawsuit and then move forward with this. And it's definitely very important, as Bruce says, I truly believe it is. But for now, I think we need to get that first mining ordinance where we need to go, whether we need to amend it or what we need to do. But I'm in favor of just postponing this indefinitely until we figure that out.
Thank you, Ms. Hickok. Coming for discussion, Mr. PJ.
Yeah, since words mean a lot, maybe a possible recommendation of amending that, that, I mean, postponing indefinitely, it's not coming back for any reason. Postponing indefinitely to maybe what Commissioner LaCroix had said, until after the court cases settled, so there, I mean, just because words mean a lot.
Would it be better, there's been a suggestion, would it be better to table it?
No.
No, table it.
No.
No.
No. The proper motion per Roberts rules is to postpone indefinitely. Tabling is only used when you want to lay something on the table during the current session that you're working on, and then you must bring it back up. Postpone indefinitely doesn't mean that you're trying to kill something at all. It just means that you're going to postpone it until such a time that you need to bring it back up.
Okay.
So per Roberts rules, that's the proper wording for that motion.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on that.
Maybe the motion should have been then to delay it until such time as we get a resolution on the other matter.
Which is what we said. Postpone indefinitely, sir.
You're going to get to the same end result.
Yeah.
With the addition?
With the understanding that until resources are available or the lawsuit is settled, one way or the other.
That was your motion, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
And that was your second?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
You guys good?
Happy with the clarification on record, thank you.
So am I. With no further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you all for coming here today.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, it's stuff for me, huh? Now we come to item number nineteen, items from the Chair and Commissioner members. Twenty eighteen candidate forum, Commissioner LaCroix. I put this on the agenda because I received an email about, from Mark, about administration use of the building and I heard there were some other concerns that were addressed to John. And so I thought to clarify it and clear it up, I'd put it on the agenda. We can discuss it out in open. And I think we also need to probably look at a completion of our facility use policy. But I think what I'll do is I'll turn it over to you, John, let you discuss.
Thank you, Commissioner. John Morrell, County HR Department. So we had proposed actually, and actually had made arrangements for a candidate forum to take place a week from tomorrow in the evening in this chamber. It had been done here two years ago. The one before that was four years ago and at that point it was hosted in the County Four-H Building. We have checked with that facility as well. So if this facility would not be the preferred location, we can relocate that forum, again, assuming approval to still continue with that process. We can relocate that to the County Four-H Building. We would just delay it slightly as far as the start time to make sure employees would still have a chance to drive from work here to the new location. The idea with hosting it in this location was for convenience for the employees. The idea for the forum is to actually let the employees learn more about the candidates that are running for office, those that are wanting to represent them as part of the constituents of the Pennington County. And then also to help the candidates, if you will, learn more about some of the thoughts that the employees have. So in the past, as well as with this session, we actually enlisted the employees to provide questions and thoughts for things that they would want to bring up for discussion during that forum. State's Attorney Mark Vargo would be the moderator for this forum. He's graciously volunteered to take that on. I've collected all of the questions already. We divided the questions into three groups. So for all of the candidates is one group of questions. There's a set of questions for auditor candidates. And then there's a set of questions for commissioner candidates. And then Mark would actually be the one that would be able to target those to the groups of candidates based upon their candidacy. All of the eight commission candidates were invited to participate initially. I realized that in my haste to get the notices out to the candidates, that I invited one that didn't have any opposition in the primary, so we actually rescinded that invitation. And then had just the ones that were facing competition in the primary were invited then to participate. We had received affirmative responses from six of the commission candidates and then also from both of the audit candidates that they would be interested in participating in this event. So again, I did research after actually some questions from one of the commissioners about this. I couldn't find any legislation in the county or in the state that actually provides for something like this or prevents an event like this. And again, I looked under Title VII, I looked under Title V with regard to use of public buildings for the state. Personally, I've benefited from the Title V using state facilities for my private business before joining the county. We actually were able to host a number of training sessions on the state Capitol grounds in the memorial building next to the memorial lake, the pond. As a private industry, we actually, at no charge, no fee, no requirement for any other types of things, other than we couldn't, we weren't allowed to bring food into the building. That was the only provision that the state required of us. So we were able to bring in water and coffee, but no food. And then again, no requirement for any additional fees or anything else to use the facilities. So basically, there's three pieces, I guess I'm seeking. First would be permission to move forward with this forum. Again, it's for the benefit of our employees to make sure they have access and are able to attend something to learn about the candidates with families and other situations and things going on. They're not always able to attend the public forums that are done by other entities. This would be just for the benefit of our employees. The second piece that I guess I'd be looking for here is the location of being able to host the forum. If it would be acceptable to have it in this chamber, that would be wonderful. If we'd prefer to have it, if it's approved, prefer to have it at the Four-H Building, we've actually checked and that facility is available as well and we can move it to that location. And then the third piece would actually be the recommendation that we do follow through with the facility use agreement. I think it's important that we look at the use of our public buildings. They are indeed owned by the public and I think they have a right to have access and use to those buildings. They are indeed owned by the public, and I think they have a right to have access and use to those buildings. We can limit the different areas of use. We can limit the times of use, those types of things. But I think the absence of that maybe creates some confusion, if you will, as far as what's allowed or not allowed. So those are my three questions or requests to the, the Commission.
Thank you, John. Is, is there any other public comment on this? Anybody else like to share? Not at this time? Okay. So I think the first part on it, I think I agree with. I, I put this on the agenda so I can address it. Firstly, I attended the forum here, and I think it's one of the best forums that I have ever attended. I mean, as far as being neutral, being fair, not being outnumbered, so forth, and the politeness and so forth. I also understand Mark's position when I got his email on it. I understand the facility use, and I think we need to do an address with the facilities, I really do. Just, just for the, the sake of, we have something, and if something comes up, we need to. But as far as, I'm more supportive of having it here for our employees. It's not anything out of line that I don't think's... I mean, there ain't nobody that respects this building more than its employees. And I think by, that's my thoughts on it. But, you know, there were, there was some stuff going on, that's why I put it on the agenda. I wanted to hear what our commissioners have to say. My, my thought is, I think we need to hold it here and, and, and then come up with a draft with the facility use of the building, and so that way we don't have any questions on it. That's my thoughts. But I'm, I'd be open to some comments from the commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
My primary concern was that if we set that precedence, which in a way we already have, but that we're going to have, that we will not be able to basically turn down anybody if they ask us to use this, this chambers from the public, any group. Any group that wants to use it would be able to come forward and say, "We want to use it." We wouldn't be able to charge them. There's a good possibility that if we, if they come and ask us to use it at seven o'clock at night, we can't just allow anybody to come in here without some supervision. I'm not saying anything about the, obviously, the county employees are going to respect our building. But, but if some other group decides they want to use it, and then we're going to have to provide possibly security, depending on what the purpose of the, the use is, someone to lock and unlock. And, and then that would mean the county has to pay an employee to do so. Unless a volunteer comes in that actually is employed or part of the commission or something like that. That's my concern right there.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with the, with the forum. I enjoyed the forum, frankly. And, but, but that's, that's, that's my main concern.
Thank you, Mark. Any further? Mr. Farby.
I certainly share Commissioner DeSanto's concerns. It's, to me, it's misuse of government property. I have other issues with, with this, and I will ask the HR Director. You say there's other, other forums that employees can't go to. Any idea where those other forums are?
No, sir. I'm saying, from a convenience perspective, this is one that would allow our employees to attend immediately after work, so they wouldn't have to transport other locations. They'd be able to clock out, if you will, from their current positions, attend the forum, and then go home.
My question was, you implied there's other forums, and I guess I'd like to know where those other forums are.
Here's actually a public forum this evening that I won't be able to attend because I'm attending an SDRS training class tonight. But I was made aware by one of the candidates that is actually running for commission that she's speaking at a forum tonight.
Thank you. I, I, John, I think you addressed it right on. It's more the convenience and possibly other. I don't think he's specifically said anything, George. Ms. Hickok, do you have any? Are you done, George?
All right. Go ahead.
Ms. Hickok.
Do we have to pay for the 4H Building?
No, ma'am, we don't.
Okay. I guess for me, it's, I don't think it's a misuse of this building. I think we do need a facilities agreement. I agree. We have done Gnome here, we've done a bunch of other people here. What's different than our employees? I think it's more convenient for the employees here, which I appreciate, because the more that attend, those are voting members of the public. They are citizens of our public. They are not just our employees. We forget that sometimes when we speak. So I, personally, I would be in that forum. I don't mind either way. But who are the two commissioners that are not coming?
So the one that actually is, is Commissioner Farby that won't be participating. The other one is actually, gosh, I didn't bring her name. Maybe I do have it.
Is it DeSanto Frye?
No, 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 no.
Well, that's right. That would be...
Jody Frye was not able to participate.
Okay, thank you. Bottom line is, if you want to have it at the 4H, that's fine. You want to have it here. I don't think we're setting a precedent. I don't think we're misusing the building. I think we do need a facilities from this day forward to make sure we have a facilities. Let's take care of employees. Let's represent them. And this forum is, I think, is going to be good for everybody, so.
Okay, Mr. Vargo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mark Vargo, Pennington County State's Attorney. So to start with John's third request, as your attorney, I am always in favor of having a better plan or a better guideline for what we're going to do. So I absolutely agree with John that that's something we should do. But this is so clearly in the direct wheelhouse of the county commission's functions and the county's functions, that it seems silly to wait. This commission has the right to set those guidelines for facility use. But this is again, so obviously something that falls within the contemplated use and the, the beneficial use for the county and for county employees, that I don't think that the lack of a facilities plan should be an impediment to using this chamber if you choose to do that. It would certainly be more convenient for the employees. And I think that it's really kind of a distinction without a difference if we send them off, off station. We're talking about here, having people who are running for county office speaking to the people who work for the county. It's hard to imagine a training or a, an event that we would hold on these grounds that would be more important, other than maybe your own meetings and the meetings of the subcommittees that we create. So this is very much in our wheelhouse. I absolutely think that it's appropriate for us to use. I know we actually haven't used county resources. John has ponied up all of the resources, the stamps and the envelopes were his, not the county's, because he wanted to make sure there weren't any questions about that. I think that's laudable, probably a little more cautious than he needed to be. But the bottom line is, this is very much similar to the fact that we conduct trainings here all the time. We have the National Association of Counties meet here and do a training of theirs where we presented to the National Association of Counties. We do those kinds of things, and the question is, does this Board believe it is in the county's best interest? That being said, I absolutely agree that it would be better to have something that's a little better laid out in facilities plan down the road. But I don't think that we should let the lack of a facilities plan be an impediment. As Commissioner DeSanto pointed out, we did this, you appeared in the one two years ago, right, sir? We haven't exactly been inundated by people demanding to use this chamber in the meantime. So I think that we could do this and still have the facilities plan worked up and put in place in, in relatively short order. But in any event, I believe that it would be appropriate to host it here, if you choose to do so.
I think, just as a comment, I'm a follow-up to this, that to say we really had no facilities plan, I think we regulated it, probably nothing in writing, but I think Holly has worked through with groups and some people have and so forth. You know, it just, just, this is no different from when we were talking about the petitions up there. My concern was with safety and security on the top step. I gave, after listing a little bit, maybe I'm just being a little over precautious, you know? And I think, I think that's the way we're kind of feeling with this. I think it, that, that this is the fit for this facility, and I hate to make it splitting hairs or, or, say, make a big stink over something that's really for the benefit of our employees. I've done some work during the week, when I've heard some of the concerns about calling and asking about the 4H Building and so forth. And, and there's, John's checked it out, and some other people are okay with it. I would really prefer it be here. I would ask for this commission's support to have it here. And, and then ask for their support to have them draft, administer, you know, the, direct the completion of the facility use policy from after this, this one's over. That's my personal opinion. So I'm just asking for the commission's support. I can't make no...
Chairman.
I think Mr. DeSanto was next.
Sorry.
No, no, I'm...
But, Ms. Hickok.
I guess my point is, is how many employee meetings do we have after hours? We have fire board and other, other things, and we've never regulated them. And we've had other employee meetings, and we haven't said, you know, there's a problem with it. Now all of a sudden, we have a forum, and now we have a problem with the employees coming in here now. So I guess we've been doing it for years where we had employee meetings in this building. So I don't see it any different. There might be more in the building, but other than that, I don't see where there's an issue, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
In response to what Deb's saying, my problem is not with the employees using the building. That's not my problem at all. My worry is that by allowing the employees to use the building, that we are basically setting ourselves up that if the employees get to use the building, the taxpayers pay for this building, that any other citizens group can call us up and say, "You got to let us use the building too." And then, we don't have employees here watching over the building, making sure the doors are locked, providing security. We have some other group, who knows who it might be. And obviously, we know there are some groups that we probably wouldn't want to entertain here in this building. But that's my, that's my concern, not, not the employees at all.
No. I, and I understand that, Mark, and that's why I said I, I don't think nothing's been really nearly. When groups have called and asked, is explained that there's got to be somebody here, you know, on doors or whatnot, and those organizations, those talks are discussed before, ahead of time. So, but I understand your concern. You know, I brought this up. I think what some of our employees are looking for right now is, I, I'll take the easy one. I'll look for a motion to direct the completion of the facility use policy for the county administration building.
I'll second that.
Okay, I made the motion. I was looking for a second, but I... So I made the motion, seconded by DeSanto. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
What's the motion now?
The motion is to direct the completion of a facility use policy for the county administration building. That's the motion.
Who's going to do that, Holly?
Yeah.
Well, I guess one more.
I just volunteered you, for the completion of the facility use, you've already started working on one, right?
Yep.
So it would be Holly.
To be brought back next meeting or brought back tomorrow, or?
As long as it takes.
Yeah, I would like to have it run through maybe even the building committee. It definitely needs to be vetted by the sheriff's office, so I will bring it back when it's ready.
Yep. So that's the motion on the floor.
Got to be done.
Yep. Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, I guess.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we're going to get to... Should we allow the, in the chambers, or the 4H Building, the candidate forum, to be held? I suggest the chambers. I'll make that motion. I, I'll make the motion to allow the candidate forum to be held in the chambers.
Second for discussion.
Motion made, seconded for discussion by Hickok. More discussion.
So let me ask, George, if we have it in the 4H Building, are you going to come?
I mean, that's also government facility.
How, what happened to last time?
What last time?
I, I think, I think that's a ravelant of what, who's going to attend, we're talking about.
Chairman, why I'm asking that is because you attended it last time, and you, you didn't have a problem with it at the government facility. Now we have a problem with it at the government facility, and then you have a problem with the speaker, it sounds like, too, George. I'm not getting it. I guess I'm not getting it, you guys. This is about the employees. It's not about you. It's not about you. So my bottom line is, I don't care what facility is at. I would like it here, but I would just like to have a forum for the candidates. So Lloyd, I'd like to do your motion. I'd like to agree with your motion. But bottom line is, I want the forum to move forward. And if it's going to be at the 4H Building this time, until we get a facilities paper, then I'm good.
We got a motion on the floor. We can vote on that and vote that down. If, if we, if we don't get the vote, then we can go to the 4H Building.
Well, Chairman, I was just making my point. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
For discussion, the reason I suggest the 4H Building and that, and that I am in agreement with the 4H Building is because we do allow many public, not just governmental, but many public groups to utilize that building. That's why I thought that was different than, than this. All of the things that we've had here have had to do with government or, or county employees and that kind of stuff. We haven't had anything that's just, any public citizens group that wants to show up. But we have at the 4H Building many times.
Julie was heading up here before you. You spoke already.
Be nice. You can have to speak to it.
Sorry.
Actually, we do have a lot of groups meet in the EOC. That's not really governed by any type of agreement. We have the Boy Scouts meet here. We have the red ribbon people that meet over in the original courthouse. So precedent is set that we already have those types of groups here. And I don't believe there's payment for anything other than when someone rents the 4H Building, which is still extremely restricted. So there is precedence that we do.
Okay, Mr. Vargo.
Thank you, Julie.
And Commissioner DeSanto, I was just going to point out, you're right that there are probably a broader cross-section of the community groups use the 4H Building than use this building.
Right.
But the two distinctions that you drew, government and employees, this is exactly those two things. And that's what we do here, government and employees, and this is about the government for the employees. So I don't think we're setting any kind of dangerous precedent, is my point.
Thank you, folks. Motion on the floors for approval of the forum in the chambers. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One no here in the chambers. Thank you, Mark. Deb?
Thank you, Steph.
Okay, I'm just bringing up part of it all over the place here.
We're not following any of your agendas. No changes. We're done.
Commission agenda preparation. Commissioner La Croix. You'd think this is all about exactly the session, but it's not. What I wanted to discuss, and I think what part of it is towards the end, Holly, part of what I wanted to discuss on this was, and we started doing it in, in this meeting. I wanted to go over formats. I wanted to go over time limits. I want the commission here today to take a look at implementing that three-minute rule and speaker request form. So I'm not asking for any action, but I, I think if we set up the structure, it's easier to do than just, and... Yeah, go ahead and have a seat. Thanks. I, I think it's much better to do if everybody comes in, they know they have a speaker's request form that they're to fill out, they're going to be able to speak. I about missed Chase, or Joyce, today because of that. I think it's a structured environment. It's not to limit people's talk. It's just to set the structure that it's here. We can always, as a commission, say, "Oh, you need to do..." And we did it today. Speak again? Come on in. But if you have that format, they know what to expect when they come in. They know that if I fill out this piece of paper, and my agenda comes up, I'm going to be able to speak right here. He's going to call my, call me by name and call me up, not be going, "Who's next?", so forth. So I'm not asking for action. I'm just saying, think about this. And I will bring it back up on the agenda later on, but I think I wanted to bring that forward today.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
Just a question. How many times do we really have that issue that we need to change it, except for when we have bigger groups where we set it up anyway? I guess that's where I'm, I think I asked you that. I guess that's where I'm, I think I asked you that before.
Yeah.
So just something to forethought as well, when you're setting that up.
I'm just talking, I understand that part and we've had this discussion. I just think we need to have the structure set up, so we're not, uh, and it's, like I said, it's not to limit anybody's speech, it's just that the structure, they know when they come in, I put this in, I wanna get to speak and, and then I'll have, you know, whoever's sitting next to me has a speaker request form, say, hey, don't bypass, we gotta get speakers left instead of George telling Lloyd, you know what I'm saying?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Um, we have had several, I mean, the asphalt plant, if you, I don't know if you remember that, the Rochford Road, um, there was another one, other than the mining.
Right.
Uh, we've had quite a few where we've had some people get up and talk for 10 minutes and, and repeat themselves 50 times.
Yeah.
And so I, I appreciated the way Lloyd ran it today. He was pretty straightforward on, this is the amount of time you're gonna get, and when they started sliding off the edge, wanting to talk about specific rules in mining, Lloyd shut him down. Said, nope, we're talking about forming a committee, that's what we're talking about, we're not talking about the other thing. So I, I like that idea, personally, I, I love it.
Well, like I said, this is just discussion. I'll bring it, depending on fill it out, I'll bring it forward at a later date, but I just wanted to put it on you guys' radars to think about again. Things could change. Okay. Um, that was the other thing, that was one of the main things I wanted to talk about. The other part, and we had this discussion today, think about this, commissioners, is on the, on the backside, we were talking about maybe we should move, uh.
Planning zoning.
Planning zoning to the beginning. Deal with it right away in the morning and then maybe, then of the rest of the stuff we can go through, 'cause we've had complaints about our meetings going for marathon times and part of it is we've had some big subjects, really. But if we could move one forward and then towards the back end, we could get through that, I don't know. Just something for you guys to think about and, and staff to think about, maybe it's not a good idea, maybe we're too far out, I don't know.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
Um, then it's the other side that people like it at 10:30 because they actually, you know, have time to take, they can go to work, come here and, you know, do their business as well. So that's gonna be a hard decision to figure out what's best.
I, in my opinion, I think if you, you said it, then people know it. It's a structured time and, and they'll, they'll work for it, that's my opinion.
I, sorry, PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department, I appreciate you bringing this up as an item. Um, we were actually brought this before the board a while ago, I think over a year ago, and it was, decided not to change anything. However, staff continually hears complaints, mainly not necessarily from the applicants as much, but from the agents that are being paid a hundred, $200 an hour to sit here. And, yeah, they'll, they'll sit here, but it, they have other things to do and they don't wanna have to charge their clients that much for sitting here, so, um, we hear it over and over again, if you can move it to the front, that would be better. And staff would recommend that as well, appreciate that.
Chairman.
Ms. Hancock.
The only thing is, is that we have a lot of rural people that come from long ways away, so, um, sometimes you hit it that early too, I think, uh, depending on roads, we do have winter most of the time in Pennington County, not the summer, so, um, I've heard complaints the other way that, you know, don't set it early, they've liked it at the 10:30 and then the main thing is that we set it at 10:30 and we keep it there, that people know that, I think they've liked that a lot better. So I can see both sides of this, but I also know that Pennington County is rural, it's not city. So it's a lot different, um, trying to get here.
These are great thoughts, Commissioner LaCroix.
Mr. DeSanto. Mr. Chair. Um, you said it better than anybody while we were talking right here. We're not gonna make everybody happy. It isn't gonna happen. Um, and, and I'm also in agreement with Deb that we do have people that are a long ways away and, uh, if they've gotta get here by 9:00 AM, it's gonna be really difficult, especially for some of my.
Ranchers.
My people and George's people, and if the roads are bad, they're not gonna get here by nine o'clock, let's leave it four o'clock in the morning, so, um.
Ranchers and farmers and different people.
Well, we better stick with it where it is.
Another option is moving start time an hour later.
Commissioner start?
Commissioner's start times an hour later.
We can't even come here at quarter till, we're not.
Well, now, now listen, I, I'm just.
Sorry.
Throwing that out there because if that was the real case, if we started later, got them done and out, and we moved through our meetings faster, 'cause that's their longest part of our meeting. It's solving both problems. Except for commissioners having to come in it.
We gotta have some of them, chairman have a little more quiet.
Okay. Just a thought, folks think about it and you can definitely throw it back at each other, talk to Holly in your pastimes and just something to think about.
Good subject, Lloyd.
But the only other thing that I, that I was gonna bring up underneath this, there, or, there's two more, is, is I wanted to clarify, I was reviewing the point of order this morning, because I was confused on it. So this isn't so much about you guys, it's about me. So when I hear point of order, we stop what we're doing, the chair decides if it's point of order or not. And, and as in our meeting, the, the training we went through, if it's challenged, the point of order is challenged, then we vote on it.
Let's say it again, so you do point of order.
You go.
Then you go.
Point of order shuts it down, chairman can make a, can ask for clarification.
If I'm the point of order. If I say point of order, you say, okay, stop the discussion.
Yeah.
You're gonna talk to Deb and say, what's your point?
If I need clarification, I'll ask you.
Okay. If you need clarification.
Or whoever. And if I decide, chair decides point of order. If it's disagreed upon, someone challenges that, that, my decision, then we vote on it.
And call the question is?
Call a question, you need, you need to be identified first.
Okay.
You have to have the floor to be, to call the question or call previous question and then a second, but you need to be recognized.
So chairman, what happens when somebody's out of line?
You call point of order.
Call point of order.
Call point of order.
So I said the wrong thing, because if someone's reiterating or, or, you know, being disruptive in a sense that they're rousing or whatever, then, then it's point of order that you need to get back on the subject is what.
I just wanted to make sure we're all clear, because I don't wanna be, you know, really I could've done point of order a couple different times towards the end of the meeting, 'cause when we say, we're gonna talk specifically on this and then we start straying out and, and I let people stray and I try to reel you back in, you know, or I need help reeling people back in too, so.
Right, if he can't reel someone back in, then he's gonna call point of order or I'm gonna call or whoever's gonna call.
Well, just, uh, today we talked about balanced meetings, so I wanted to reiterate, that's why I went into that, is about the balanced meeting. I don't think everybody knew that balanced is, we had the rancher, we had everything and that's why I wanted to make that point today and not really get out of point of order or have a point of order, it's because it was balanced. A lot of people didn't know that because there were so many people in the meetings. So, um, I was on point where I was talking about the meetings, not the mineral one, but a lot of people were saying it was stacked.
Yeah.
So that's why I wanted to reiterate, not because these people were doing the right thing today, they were coming forward and saying what they thought, but they also have to remember that, um, what was said and what was done on that meeting was two different things from what the media's been saying and other people been telling them, so.
No, I was just, that's all I was trying to get to.
Yeah.
So the other thing. Now I miss Holly, is.
Travel.
No, I got that, I'm gonna really make people mad, but the executive session on the agenda, I did wanna have some discussion on that, because I think, I'm not saying anybody's done anything wrong, I, you know, some of the talk that I've gotten is if we don't wanna use the executive session at the beginning of the meeting, we should just do away with it, or maybe we shouldn't have it on, and then when it is on, we know, it's, I, I'll just ask Holly how it got to this.
So executive session was a practice that I selfishly started probably seven, eight years ago and there was several instances back to back that I had to agen- amend the agenda multiple times. And I had a department head email me one time and said, don't you know what's going on in your own office? And it was in full-hearted jest, but it, it kinda hit me that it was a waste of time and resources for me to keep amending the agenda over and over. So one way to solve that was to put executive session on every single time, because it never fails, when I don't put it on, something pops up. I mean, you guys are running a huge company, a huge government entity, and we have a lot of employees, personnel issues pop up, contractual pops up, litigation pops up, and it was just easier and fewer resources to keep it on. And we felt that we were still being fully transparent to the citizenry by adding a note in the minutes to say executive session wasn't needed. The board knows if you have executive session, because you're gonna have materials in your packet that are stamped executive session materials, so you know whether you have one or not. Um, but again, it wasn't a direction of the board, it was something that they went with upon my request to save me resources. We were throwing away hundreds of pages of agendas, because I had to throw them away. And we've learned little tricks now that Joan and I won't mass produce the agenda until Friday or Monday sometimes, just when we know that we're not gonna have any changes. So we kinda make some tweaks, but it was something that I started by putting executive session on every meeting and putting a note in the minutes saying that it wasn't needed.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
I don't know who was first.
Doesn't matter, go ahead, Deb.
So here, here's a thought, number one, um, when does the agenda have to be in? And we need to get that deadline and then after that, if people aren't putting their stuff in on that deadline, I think, I know the city's that way, it's hard for the staff to get that moved forward. Number two, we're putting executive sessions on when we get here, I find out on Tuesday that we have executive session on something I have no information on, and it drives me nuts, and it's not from the staff, it's usually from commissioners. So if you have an executive session, I'd like the information ahead of time, what we're gonna talk about, so I know if I wanna go in there or not. 'Cause I've seen a many time in the last three and a half years, we're going in there and I'm like, I have no information what you're gonna talk about. I like to do my homework, I like to see what's going on, so if you have an executive session, put it on on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so Holly can put it in there and we can review it, 'cause I, again, I think it's more what I've seen commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So my question was exactly that. I think, um, Deb's correct when it comes to, like, if it's a contractual or pending litigation situation, we need to have that information so that we can all study it and look at it and that kinda stuff. But if it's a personnel issue, that personnel issue could come up the morning of the commission meeting for that matter, or at the commission meeting itself. Can a commissioner at that point in time call for executive session for a personnel issue?
So Jay.
It's, it's on the agenda and that's how we, that's how we do it, because.
But nobody's gonna have, nobody else at the, on the board's gonna have any information about why somebody's calling for a personnel issue.
But then the board would vote whether you go into executive session or not.
And then wait till the next meeting.
But in, in public, so let's say, because so, these personnel issues, you don't wanna mention names, you don't wanna mention the, the circumstances, you just wanna say.
Personnel.
I wanna go into executive session due to a personnel issue, and then they vote on it, well, if they don't even know what the heck you're going into personnel, what are they voting on?
I won't vote for it anymore.
Yeah, either don't vote on it, um, here, or if you get into executive session, it becomes abundantly clear that the information that you fill, uh, isn't, uh, isn't there before you and you need more time, uh.
Come back out.
Come back out and continue the matter to, uh, the executive session, the, uh, in the next meeting. So you have control over whether you actually discuss an item, starting here before you go there, and once you get there.
Mm-hmm.
You can come back out and continue the matter, because you don't have enough information.
And I haven't seen it very often, Mark, where it's been the other way.
The board has a policy that any item that goes on the agenda has to have supporting documentation to go with it, that's your policy.
Yeah.
Again, things come up, but it should be fair that everybody has the same information ahead of time to be considered.
Good, Joe, follow up, Mark?
Well, um, I like, I lost my train of thought here for a second, hold on, I'll gather it back. Okay, so, so if I say today, I'd like to have executive session regarding a personnel issue, Jay, you're saying that we don't actually have to vote on it up here, we can go back there and vote on having the per- but we.
Well, you have to vote here to go in, you always have to do that, and you have to state what you're going in for and cite the statute.
Okay.
But if, if you have a question, I don't even know what this is about, um, then say it and maybe get the others before you even go back there to vote, yeah, let's, let's not go into executive session today, because there doesn't appear to be information that we're all gonna need to rely on.
Okay.
Uh, could be that you didn't see something in your packet and it was there.
Right.
Um, I mean, there's a million reasons why some might feel comfortable going in, others may not, but that's why you have the vote out here. Once you get in there, if, um, uh, becomes apparent that I guess maybe we don't have the information, then you don't have to stay there, you can come back out and, and, uh, move to continue the executive session item to the next meeting or something, make sure you do have the information you need.
One good thing out of this is, is we're getting some good clarification of what the use is and so forth and some situations. My only main concern was, I, I was accustomed to it, if I see it on the agenda, then it's gonna be there, we're gonna have it. You know, if it's, and you explained to me, Holly, why you did it and I, I definitely understand, but I didn't know how the other commissioners feel, if they, maybe we should try it to only put it on there when we need it. Maybe we should try it if it, and then if, if it's becoming cumbersome and, 'cause you're a lot more and more experienced now than you were seven years ago.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Would that be a good thing to do or not?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'm good with either way. We can try it without for a while, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, my opinion is leave it on there and at the beginning of the meeting, say, we're not having executive session. I mean, that, that takes care of it.
That's a good point.
And, and then the public still has noticed that there could possibly be one, but at the beginning of the meeting, maybe, yeah.
There, we clear there.
Before we even go into, uh, to consent agenda, say, there is no executive session today.
Plus, we really don't have, there's no action that needs to be taken.
George, you have anything?
George, you have anything on that?
Fine, but maybe the way it is.
Okay. So we had good discussion, that's what it's all about.
Thank you.
Okay.
Then your last thing.
Yeah, my last though. Uh.
Which is mine too.
You get three minutes.
No, folks, you know, this is the NACO training that come forward, if I look at them and I looked at some of the agenda or some of their, their conferences and some of the trainings that they provided, it was one of those things that I think are ben- very beneficial to the commission and then, and if you look at, we only have 15, one of the, one of the conferences is the, what the heck is that, I got, the Western Interstate Conference that happens, that's, that's a 15 state that we're involved in, so really, it's only gonna come to South Dakota once every 15 years, and if that's all you can do is go to it when it's in South Dakota, kinda limits it. They had some great training that's there, a- and when I'd asked Holly, has, has anybody ever gone to these? I mean, 'cause there's such great trainings that they go through, and she said not that she'd recall. And I think it's, I, I'd mentioned to Mark and some others about these conferences and I think, my personal opinion is I've went to some trainings with Mark and I went some, some training sessions with Holly and, and I've been to some training with Deb also and I've seen some people, people that really focus in to learn what's going on and these are some great things that are, that they're, uh, talking about. They're talking about agriculture, community, economic development, human services, transportation, infrastructure, taxes and, and fees, community economics and not, and also leadership and telecommunications. You know, some of the things that are going on. You know, some of the things that are going on in our community. That we could go, we could send somebody to, to train, learn, I mean. While come to us, while economic development come to us and start talking about abatements and some other stuff. How are we gonna learn that stuff in five minutes? You know, I, I, my personal belief, when I seen this and seen what they're, and I, I have to admit, I looked at their newspaper at the, when I first got on the commission, I just kinda sat it off the side, didn't read it, probably like a lot of people. So I wanted to bring this up and bring it to your guys' attention, to get on their website and look at some of the stuff. You know, NACO has saved Pennington County, I looked up on their website, I believe. In, in, in grants, we've gotten 1.5 million dollars. And estimate, and that was in 2017. They, they don't, not only have saved us 1.5, but they've also lobbied for us in Washington DC. They do all sorts of webinar trainings and so forth. So when I seen this, I asked Holly to do some research for me. And I know this is a bad time, nobody wants to approve anything, and you're just sitting there listening to me gab, but. But I think it's important. My first thoughts is I think we need, I would like to see the commissioners. Hot, you know, ma- office manager at least attend one. One of these conferences a year. And the. The most important one is like within two weeks, which isn't enough time, I don't think so. For family planning or whatnot, but the national one, there is time, but it's more expensive.
Alright.
I think this commission needs to have some good solid conversations, if not this year. Plan for next year. And I'd like to see the off, you know, the commission manager and at least one or two commissioners attend one of these a year. I'm not saying who, I mean, if we set so much money aside and we get two commissioners that wanna go, why can't we take the money that's set aside and you split the costs between the two of you? I mean, we don't have to make that, but I think we need to make a start, and I think our commissioners. You know, we're the second largest county in, in, in the state, and we've got a lot that we can learn and bring forward to uh our community by attending one of these. Any thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I'm in agreement that there's, going through this, I went through the invitation um before Holly printed all this up, and started looking at the, what's on the agenda, and there's a lot of stuff on there that I could learn a lot from. If we had, if we went about it in that we sent new commissioners to these things. Either the first or second year that they're on, then all commissioners are gonna wind up going to this and at one point in time or another. And uh, and I think that it will help us to make better decisions, to have better conversation, better options, um, and all of that. Everybody knows, Holly knows, I come into the office and I say, "I don't feel comfortable, I'm spending this kinda money," and, and, and I don't. But I, but I have to also weigh. Will something I learn here enable me to make a better decision that's gonna wind up saving the county fifty times what we spent on that, on that uh convention? So, uh, that's, that's my, that's my take on it. Thanks, Mark.
Here, when. I went to some of the things in the city and I actually paid for some of them myself as well, because people were saying things about travel back then. So, I think Lloyd, you did too, because we thought it was important. I know Malcolm, same way, paid for his because it does. Um, I came back and was, was redoing the downtown with a bunch of people, a team of people, and a lot of that stuff that I learned um how to do um were from some of those places you visited that I'd already done it. So people say you can get online and you can learn the same things, and I don't think so. I think it's a lot easier for some of us, our learning is from watching and doing, and then um seeing on paper. So everybody has a learning curve, but um I'm not against this, I just, in this case, I don't know if it's the office manager, if it's. Usually what happened is some people were convenient and some weren't, in order to be able to go and the length of time it was going, so. I think, say we throw the option out there, and you'd be surprised, some people, the dates and times. Um, but everybody should have a chance to go, I mean, like, start with certain people, cause you're here, what, four years?
Right.
So, if people decide to do that, that's fine, um, if I decide to do it, I don't know at this point um my business, but I would like if other people wanted that option, that they could have that if they wanted to.
Well, I put this on for a reason, because I think it's important. You know, I, granted, it's bad timing. I don't think there's really any good timing for talking about, I thi- I call it training. And, and learning, cause you really do. In my discussions and evaluating. We could send one person in July to the conference and expo. Our two of May's not, that's this year, but really, if, if, if you guys are really interested about this, we'd need direction, budgets are coming up. We need some direction to be able to put some. It's still not a final decision until the budget's finalized, but I'd like to give Holly some direction on. Maybe she could run some numbers and say, "Okay, we're gonna do, say, two." I'm gonna stick with what I said, I want an office manager going once a year. The one. And then decide one or two commissioners, that's, that'll be our breaking point, we'll figure out those costs and maybe come back with some numbers. But I guess I'm just looking for some direction. We don't need to take a vote on it, I can ask her to do them, and just kinda give her some confidence whether, and bring it at budget time. If you guys are interested.
Chairman, I, I don't think we'll put it on the budget anyway till next year, so there's a lot of conversation to have till then.
Well, yeah.
We'll be having budget options, just putting in the budget and then going in nineteen.
Well, this is just for her preparation, so she doesn't feel like she's doing something out of line.
Right, what Lloyd is saying is our budgets, our department budgets, are due this Friday.
He said that, I, sorry.
So, just, you know, figuring out what numbers you guys want me to put in, if any, for Friday's submission.
I'm, yeah. The, the idea that we do uh the new commissioners, in any given year, there's never gonna be more than two.
No.
New commissioners, am I correct?
Yeah, this year, we could, we could have three this year.
This year.
Okay.
Me and you, there's only two.
So Chairman, we, we pay for you to go when you first come here for the, the, I, I would like to see, not the first couple of years. I'd like to see if they go to the first ones for their training, that means they're interested, and then, then after that, Mark, then. You know, that says that they're willing to learn the next step, instead of going, okay, they never went to either one of those. And now all of a sudden, they want, they look like they just wanna go out of town, is what I always hear, so. Hold on, Lloyd, so. The bottom line is, is put it in the budget, it always can be taken out.
That's what I.
Okay.
Okay, I agree.
So, sorry.
We're just, we, we, yeah, so I, I think we should put it in.
I think, and I'll, I'll just, we'll, we'll have to, I'm sorry, you'll have to run some numbers, the average costs, we know the, the main expo one's the most expensive, but not always, but um. We'll work out the details, and we'll bring, bring it back.
That cost, yep.
Yeah. Okay, I don't think we need any action on that. So, next on our J D, is committee reports.
Nothing to report.
I've attended Health and Human, or Health Board, I'm now a voting member on there. Cause I'm an active user, so, of the care center.
I went to mine, to the Fire Board, went to the Interior, remember, and then uh, that was good food. I think I reported that last time, and they had some good information of changes they were doing, and then. We had Chamber, of course, and they're doing yes vote, and doing some stuff with uh conversation they had with the mayor. JSC and some other things that I'm on, um, that's usually every couple of months, so. Pities are going good, they're very informational.
All right, one quick thing while you're all here, um, Commissioner Busker sent me a text not too long ago that since he is unavailable to attend the TIF meeting, is there anybody willing to go tomorrow morning? Seven AM to the TIF meeting?
I think I covered for somebody's uh planning commission last week.
That was Busker's.
What time?
Seven AM tomorrow morning.
Big old pass.
Alright, I'll go.
You want a printed packet?
I suppose so.
Otherwise, you can look it up all online. Um, you'd have to give Joan and I maybe two hours, and you can come back and get it. Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay. Anything else, nothing, George?
I have planning commission this month, I was filling in last month. That was not mine.
I just seemed where I could get a dig, so I took it, but um.
There's no dig for me.
Okay. Uh, approval of the vouchers.
Motion to approve the vouchers.
Been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion?
Got a question, I thought that all this uh, all the Safety and Justice Challenge or the, the, the grant, what they say. The name for it, I thought that was all separate, separately budgeted and, and so on and so forth, that. Pennington County Jail's on here for five, six hundred bucks lodging, Safety and Justice Challenge, and that's the. What takes that grant? I think that's all part of it.
MacArthur?
MacArthur, there you go. Thought that was all part of the MacArthur grant, and I thought that was all separated from us. Anyway, it's six hundred bucks in here for.
Yeah, we can check on that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One no, from Mr. Farabee. Any items from the public? And I have to read this, so, my glasses, eh. You, you pretty much know that anything you say, we can't take action on, okay.
Joyce Shagru, citizen, and I'm beginning to think my age is showing that I'm, I'm thinking that experience and wisdom uh may have some benefit. Having um items from the public at the end is good in my perspective for someone like me, okay? I've been involved in organizations where it's at the beginning, and you don't really hear from, get any input of what went on during the meeting. First of all, I wanna thank you for recognizing the Pennington County employees, that may seem very mundane to you. However, I spent years and years of experience at first, first level civil service, right below appointees and elected officials. And this is the first time that I heard anyone say that they really thought that this group is the glue that holds it all together, and that's been my perspective for many years. And I do appreciate that you recognize that group for the value that they have to you. The second is uh, it appears to me, I was very interested in the discussion, the input from the group uh about your committee appointees for this mining committee, I'm not involved in that at all. However, let me give you a little perspective personally from the V H R committee, because I was involved in two of those. The second committee, and uh it's well-known, my opinion on that, I was probably, there were two of us citizens. Uh, four uh that, as I recall, that were from the industry or proprietors. I think I had, I think I, there was one vote during the entire committee uh that was uh from my position, that was supported. It was five to one, five to one, five to one. I knew that on the committee, but I made a point of sitting there, bringing up my discussion, sometimes very contentiously, just to get it on the record, I knew I was never going to win. So I see you evolving in how you now form those committees. My personal opinion is that you need the experts, but you need them to give input to others on the committee, appoint people who are knowledgeable, who are smart, who are whatever the words that were used this morning. But don't let your committees be governed by those who gain from the output. And who votes is what's important, okay? If you're, the vote is what counts, so if you have your committee stacked, and now someone has used that in a derogatory way, I don't remember Deb, you were somewhat defensive this morning, uh, just as an aside, but. If they have the vote, like in mine, five to one, you know how it's gonna come out before you even start. And it takes someone who is dogged, who keeps informed, like I did, to sit there and take that. Would the other person just opt it out, they got tired of it and did not attend, and I was a loner. So, I'm, I'm appreciate that people are giving you input, and that you're listening, and that they, how you do this is evolving. Because probably unbeknownst to you, I understand now from what I heard this morning, that you've had a court case brought against you, you were close before on that second V H R committee. There was a group, not on the committee, but there was a group that asked for uh an opinion. Asked for input on suing the county commission for how that committee was structured. They didn't have the financial support, and there were other reasons, but you were very close at that point, and I don't know if you knew that or not, but that discussion was out there. And it has left some people very angry, some of the citizens very angry. And what happens then is that they're, they won't listen anymore. They just, uh, they just, they just don't believe that you're fair, and so uh I, I'm glad to see it's evolving and that you're listening. Then, the planning and zoning timeline, I'm a planning and zoning person, you know that now, uh, that's generally why I come. It's set at ten thirty, very seldom has happened what happened this morning, where you had a fairly long length of time between your business and ten thirty. Usually, it's the other way around, uh, this happened a couple of times, but not very often, and it's probably efficient, I don't know, but. I think leave it at ten thirty, don't set it any earlier than ten, because the folks that come in are not the folks from Rapid City, they're from outside, like George or someone said. They're, they're the rural people that come in for planning and zoning, their issues are not here in town. You know, you don't even Hill City, they're out, so give them time, I heard some comments this morning, "Oh, I didn't know about this until this morning." And so they got in here on time, Marvin Cameron was one of those, that I heard say that this morning, and so. Don't change that, it's in our heads, that's my thinking.
Thanks, Joyce, cause I was.
Okay. Thank you for listening to me. I, and I use this time, I don't know why other people don't, but maybe they found some magic way. I like to talk to all of you, rather than individually, and get my message the same to everybody, okay, thanks.
Thanks, Joyce.
Thank you.
Look for a motion, we have no executive session, so I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Been moved by Hickox, seconded by DeSanto.
Second.
To adjourn.
Boy, was that the power of suggestion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.